The March 13th meeting of the Scarborough Planning Board will come to order, please. Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I am Richard Hughes, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Doreen, you please call the roll.
Jim Hebert?
Here.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Here.
Jennifer Ladd?
Here.
Rick DuPerry? I mean, Richard Meinke?
I'm here.
And Roger Beely.
And he's on mute.
Roger is here on mute. We can see him up there, so we know he's here. As an update, Rick DuPerry, who's been on the planning board for, I believe, six years, has resigned. Noah Perlett is not here tonight. That moves Jim Hebert to a voting member. Next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes of February 21st, 2023. Do I hear a motion?
Oh, you're right. Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
And second from Jim Hebert. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, please call for the vote, Doreen.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
Jim Hebert?
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd?
Yes.
With Meinke?
Yes.
And Roger Beely.
I wasn't, I don't think I was there.
Oh, that's okay. They are, minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is, notice that item number 501, 5.01, the Main Coastal Protection project has been tables at the request of the applicant. Next item on the agenda. Let me get down here, is the this is still wrong. We're going to take things out of order depending on which application form you have. I mean, excuse me, on which agenda form you have. And we're going to begin with the Downs and the subdivision request for Crossroads Holding requesting preliminary subdivision review of a 32-acre five-lot subdivision at Scarborough Downs. Property is further identified as assesses map R52 lot four. We're going to be kind of bunching these, linking these elements together because in the case, in two cases, one item must be discussed first before the second item can be reviewed. So, for instance, for the hotel, which has two applications in to us, we're going to take a look at the sketch plan first and then look at the gravel request. And for the Downs, we will look at the Downs subdivision request first and then move to the affordable housing request. So for the Downs, for the town.
Thank you. So, the, the Crossroads Holdings has submitted a preliminary subdivision application for the five-lot subdivision at Scarborough Downs. This follows a November 2022 master plan approval for the Town Center. The subdivision would include a mix of commercial, office, restaurant, and retail uses, and would be followed by a final subdivision application and site plan approvals for each lot. Staff has included comment with respect to traffic and bypass road detail, as well as parking and other engineering items. And with that, I would turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I should point out for those folks who are watching, as well as those in the room, that this is a preliminary request. It is a preliminary review. It's almost as though we're doing a sketch plan for a subdivision. We do not expect to take a vote tonight, but instead to have a good conversation with the applicant so that we can reach a full understanding of what they're proposing. Thank you. Dan?
Good evening. Glad I came on time. Dan Bacon here on behalf of Crossroads Holdings. I do have a slideshow and I've logged in on Zoom, so if it's possible, I would share my screen. Thank you. Just bring this up real quick. I'll get started. Is that visible? No, that's still your screen, isn't it? Yeah. Share screen. Okay. I'm getting closer. Okay. Great. Well, thank you. Sorry for the delay. Dan Bacon here on behalf of Crossroads. I'm joined this evening by Brian O'Connor with Cube 3, who the board's met, I believe, at Sketch Plan, and has been to other meetings to talk about the Town Center. Drew Gagnon's here, who you know well from our civil team. And Eric Giudaboni, I believe, is on as a panelist. She's our transportation engineer assisting on the project. She's here for questions, but if she's visible, you might want to let her in for Q and A section of the meeting or the presentation. And Rocky Rusper is also here in person, partner with Crossroads. So, we're very excited this evening to kind of officially begin the subdivision review process for the first phase of Town Center that we've been working on for a couple of years now, actually, in the preliminary stages, conceptual stages. As Eric indicated, we've had a master plan review and approval. We also had initial sketch plan, kind of lay the framework out for this subdivision review process that we're starting this evening. And kind of going back a bit further, we worked very closely with the downtown committee, the Town Committee, for almost a year on kind of design principles and approach to Town Center. That's been able to inform our layout. And we were very appreciative of that process. And a lot of the principles and elements of this plan really came from, from that process. So, in terms of this evening, as indicated, this is really kind of a preliminary light meeting where we wanted to update the board on where we've come since Sketch Plan, cover really some key design approaches that we're taking around the street design, around traffic calming, explain the larger lots that we're creating through subdivision or propose to create through subdivision. That will be further divided, further reviewed by the board through site plan, in some ways similar to the Innovation District. And one of the, one of those lots is actually later on your agenda, as you know, Three-I Home for a sketch plan review. And then walk through kind of the other key elements of subdivision, stormwater utilities, recognizing that we're working more with staff in the next few weeks to update these preliminary plans and resubmit them to kind of have an incremental review with you as the board, and also working with the peer review engineers. There's a fair amount of content, so we thought it was appropriate to have this kind of two-step preliminary process. So just to kind of remind the board and the public viewing, where we're talking about, this larger kind of blue boundary is the overall Town Center district that was approved under the master plan. And at this point, we're talking about that first phase of Town Center, really to activate the first initial lots and to extend Scarborough Downs Road up from where it is today to the north, and then Market Street out to where it's under construction out towards Higgin's Parkway. So we're really talking about only a portion or percentage of the overall Town Center area as this phase one. This helps kind of paint the picture a bit better. This is our conceptual master plan that we've shared with the board and with the public. We also use it for marketing so people understand kind of the, the end goal with the Town Center layout. These are obviously conceptual, conceptual level, really to show the pattern of development planned and the kind of the general configuration of the Town Center. So, this will be refined through subdivision and through site plan review. But we wanted to use this so you, the board understands kind of the area that we're talking about in red and the general direction of, of layout. So on the right side of the screen is the residential area well under construction. And then so again, we extend Scarborough Downs Road through this phase from right to left, and then Market Street out to where it leaves off today towards Higgin's Parkway. So getting into a bit more detail, and this actually rotates the view 90 degrees, so I changed the orientation on you. But this is, this shows more specifically the road layout. So the bottom of the screen is now Town Center Residential. Scarborough Downs Road is running kind of north-south, top-to-bottom on the screen. And we're proposing five lots at this point in this first Town Center phase. And again, these lots are larger lots. They're development areas which will be further divided and reviewed by the board as individual sites come before you. But we have a large, and I'm not going to go in order one through five. I'm going to go kind of screen bottom to, to, to top. But coming up from Town Center, we have a larger lot, Lot Four, which we anticipate to be likely multifamily housing, just north of the American House Senior Living Facility. That's approved just to the south of this, this, this lot. On the left side of the road is actually a lot that will define the area of the second pump station. That's, that's almost complete, like 99% complete at this point. That's been under construction for the past year or so to serve this area of the project, as well as additional area. That's a small lot, and that's Lot Five. Lot One is next, kind of moving up the screen. And this is the lot that would include Three-I Home and also a mixed-use building and some associated parking and development that we anticipate to be on Lot One, as well as some, a stormwater, a larger stormwater BMP gravel wetland, which is this kind of stared shape here, which borders Lot One. And then Lot Three is across from Lot One and just to the north, Lot Four. And that's where we anticipate kind of the central square, really kind of the heartbeat and the hub of the Town Center. At this point, it's being laid out simply as a lot. And we're working on design and programming to come before the board in the future with the specifics of the central square and the development that would occur in that location. And then Lot Two is the area that's the top of the screen, and that's north of Lot One and on the other side of Market Street. And so, those are the, again, the larger lots that we're creating at this point. And then will come before you with further detail on each of those. This is simply a graphic, and I've highlighted already kind of the, the direction of development and land use as we anticipate on these lots. And these are just simply so you can help visualize a bit where we anticipate building development. Because looking at a subdivision without a sense of where buildings go isn't all that helpful. But the subdivision process is that process where we're just creating the lots and the road infrastructure. And then you, of course, review the lots in buildings, site plan by site plan. So, this is really kind of to give you a general sense of proximity, locations of where we anticipate buildings to be, similar to the master plan, that can aid in your review as we look at the subdivision. So in terms of the street network, and you actually saw this at your, at your last sketch plan review, this shows you more than this initial phase of development. But we thought it was important to kind of remind the board of this as we narrow back down to Phase One. We're thinking about Phase One with Phase Two in larger kind of street grid design in mind. So we wanted to bring this up before we kind of jump into more details around Phase One. In that, we're designing these roads initially. In the case of Cross Street, the street that comes off of Downs Road is a dead end, but it's only a temporary dead end. You know, it will be extended to tie into roads to the east. Similarly, Scarborough Downs Road, when it passes Market Street, for now, we're designing it as a dead end, at least from a public street standpoint, recognizing that Downs Road will be extended in the future phase up towards Innovation District. And similarly to that, we're anticipating a grid layout on the, really the, I guess it's the left quadrant of Town Center that we're only starting with Lot Two today. And we're going to be working with staff and the board on right-of-way connections, road connections that will extend in the future to create that road network and provide alternative routes other than going through just the Scarborough Downs market intersection given there's a lot of goals for that intersection. We want to make sure we can keep that a pedestrian intersection, really kind of the people hub of Town Center, which we're kind of highlighting is yellow here, by providing these alternate routes over time as we phase Town Center. So this is getting into a bit more detail on street design, which is in your packages for Phase One. And we talked a lot at Master Plan about kind of traffic calming and gateways into the Town Center from all directions. This, this shows you the southern direction or the gateway from the south to into Town Center. And so this is really as you come up the Downs Road from Town Center Residential. And we've included, you know, after discussion with the planning board, a traffic calming measure, a gateway treatment with a crosswalk with a center island, right as you kind of come into Town Center to slow traffic, to cue that you're coming into a more congested area where there's going to be more on-street parking, pedestrian priority, et cetera. So that's the, the feature here with a crosswalk that'll link both sidewalks on both sides of the street. It also provides a really key linkage to our trail system to the west that will go out towards Higgin's Parkway, that'll link to the Allagash Lot. And is really kind of one of our key passive recreational amenities. So it's intentional in terms of where that crosswalk is with a protected center island. In addition to that, we've designed for on-street parking in every location that's possible, recognizing we need to have some separation from driveways and, and whatnot. And that's really the kind of the nature of this street design as you enter Town Center from the south. So that gateway treatment on-street parking that can serve development on both sides, a multi-use path on the left side per the master plan, and a sidewalk on the right side of the road per the master plan. And you see Lot Four on, on the right, Lot Five and, and Lot One. This is up a half a block or so further up the Downs Road. That shows you the continuation of that street cross-section, on-street parking again to serve development on both sides of the street. That multi-use path comes up on the left side of Downs Road. And actually, in this vicinity, converts into, makes really more of an urban sidewalk street with even additional space for pedestrians. And, and then you see the Cross Street, kind of going left to right on your screen, and crosswalks at this key intersection, both Cross Street and Downs Road. And, and then you'll see the beginning of, or part of Lot Three, which is that sort of central square location. Those crosswalks are intentional to be key connection points, both sides of the street to that future central square. And the, and again, on-street parking on the top of the screen. And this is the last street design slide that shows you the remainder of the street proposal for this phase. So Downs Road continues up. We're going to talk in more detail about the actual intersection of Market and Downs. And Brian and Drew are going to do that in this specific design approach we have there for, for pedestrians and calming traffic. But that's shown there, the three-way intersection. And then Market Street goes left to right on the screen and a very similar street cross-section. So the closest to Town Center, you have those wide sidewalks, on-street parking, sort of tree wells, more urban design to street trees on that half of Market Street, if you will. And then two different locations for crosswalks with center islands. And those crosswalks are located intentionally close to these future road connections to the north. You see those arrows that are showing the intention of right-of-ways that will be introduced onto Lot Two to provide that future street network to the north and to the east. And so those crosswalks are intentionally located actually on the Town Center side of those intersections because there's left-turn lanes shown on the other side to provide capacity and invite cars and visitors who aren't necessarily headed to Town Center to kind of take lefts and use those, that future route to go around Town Center, while also providing capacity for cars to continue on and go into Town Center. So those left-turn lanes are designed intentionally to provide a fair amount of capacity, really to kind of enable that movement to be more free than, than going straight if there is a reason to, to bypass Town Center. So I think that's my segment of the presentation. I'm going to have Brian jump up and talk a bit about the intersection proper and, and Central Square and Market and Downs.
Thanks. Good evening. Brian O'Connor from Cube 3, working, working with the team here for quite a while on this. We're going to give you a little bit of relief from the black and white with two pages of color graphics, and that's it. But what, what we really want to do is take a little bit of a step back here and really support a lot of the engineering and thought process that's going into street width and dimensionality and the very, you know, really strong engineering here. I, I think when we think about Lot Three in this central square, I think it's important to remember through the, the process here, what we're trying to accomplish as a team. And, and this sort of idea of creation of sense of place and what it means to be here and how it's going to feel to be here is something that we're making a really deliberate effort to have happen in conjunction with the engineering. We don't want to have like a great idea collectively as a team, then engineer it and sort of forget about the experiential piece of it. So we're trying to do these things together. And just to remind everyone quickly, you know, this Lot Three is really about a, a central amenity space that has lawn areas. And, and again, this is conceptual, so this is still evolving. And you'll even see one graphic on the next page that looks a little bit different than this. But, you know, we're a mix of lawn areas and hardscape to create the opportunity for really rich and flexible programming through the seasons and through the years as the project changes and evolves and matures with additional development. Number three in the middle there is a light retail building, which you'll see in another image here that we're still working on the design and programming of. We have active street front retail on both sides of Downs here, which I think is critical. And, and probably the most important piece that we're going to talk about just for a minute here is that sort of blue square in the middle. This is really that primary intersection Dan mentioned between Downs and Market. And what we're trying to do here is propose a raised intersection for this area. It's another traffic calming measure. Drew's going to do a much better job than I could in describing what that actually means from a technical standpoint. But at the end of the day, what, what we want to do is really support this idea of pedestrian priority and this idea of programming and relationships across streets that create this sense of place. And so at Building Three up there, we, we see sort of a mix of indoor and outdoor uses that are going to be fed from activity and vibrancy on Market Street and along the right, the lower edge of Downs. We see restaurant use and other light use on the lower right-hand corner of that intersection, hopefully in conjunction with the development of that mixed-use building as well as retail kind of dribbling down the street and feeding that last slide that Dan showed as we have more retail experience down Market. So at, at the end of the day, I think we still see this as a real hub to the development. We think the execution of this intersection is really critical to the character and the quality of this place. And if we jump really quickly, do I do this standard? Yep, there we go, to the next image. So these are two very quick shots of what that intersection is starting to evolve into. They're a little hard to see here, so next time you see us, we'll have a lot more design work that goes with this. But we're looking down Market towards that main intersection. And what you see on the right-hand side is the beginnings of the mixed-use building. You can see that it's sort of peeled back at that corner, creating this rich outdoor potential dining experience for a restaurant that's corner-located with outdoor seating wrapping around the corner. And then on the other side in the building, we haven't spent any time really talking about yet anchoring that other corner. As we look across the intersection there, you can start to see it's orange right now, which it won't be. But this sort of rich outdoor space that exists in a large covered pavilion area, flanked by these active uses on either side that really start to create this rich blend of indoor and outdoor spaces. All of this is sort of around the idea of making sure that pedestrians can flow smoothly and not feel like they're taking their lives into their own hands. So you've got parallel parking on either side of Market. You can see we've got tree wells, wide sidewalks, very deliberate crossing areas. And I think the notion of treating this intersection differently and treating it as a raised intersection to really support this idea is something that I think Drew can probably explain in a little bit more detail. But I think we really just wanted to set the table for what we're thinking for this area. And we're really excited about where this is going, so.
Good evening. Drew Gagnon with Coral Palmer. I do apologize, we're back to the black and white slides. But I do have a little bit of hatching on there, so it's, it's a little bit out of my comfort zone here, but we'll try our best, so. Brian did a really good job of kind of setting the scene for this intersection. And we've been talking about it a lot from the initial sketch plans is we have to have some sort of design congestion here, right? So we're providing bypass lanes on other lots. We're providing additional capacity at other intersections as we lead up to this intersection. Pedestrians are completely the priority at this intersection. So what you're going to see, and what I'm going to walk you through, is really kind of starting at that standpoint and then working backwards into, okay, how do we create a safe intersection with appropriate lanes and papers and things that everyone can be comfortable about? So as Brian mentioned, we're proposing a raised intersection here. It's about four inches in raised. That follows a main DOT raised crosswalk policy. As you can see, we're proposing a material change across the crosswalks at all legs of the intersection here. The ramps are these dash lines, and as we're also provided in your package, they're going to be at about 4%, so they're eight-foot ramps. And that's really a little bit less steep than the DOT guidance, but we're doing that intentionally to assist with plowing and other public works needs. And we think that this will still create that traffic calming future of that level change, all while providing for, you know, realistic snow plowing and other activities like that. So we have a stop-controlled intersection completely here, so all three legs. So the bottom, bottom road here is Scarborough Downs Road, Market Streets perpendicular up and down on the page there. So we're proposing a one-way, or excuse me, an always-stop, single-lane approach for each intersection. So we're, we intentionally left out a little bit of the traffic analysis in this first application. We wanted to meet with Town first and kind of walk through our, our ideas and our thoughts behind the analysis. So that's going to be provided in the next submission in a much more detailed setting. But we've done a complete capacity analysis of the Downs in this intersection. And what we think is, from a trip-end standpoint, is actually going to come through this intersection. And we've kind of worked backwards from there and making sure that we've got adequate capacity so that this intersection designs, is designed and, and works in, in real life, right? Because this is just kind of the page setting at this point. So we've done this intentionally, and we think that it always, it always stop. So we've done this intentionally and we think that it always, it always stop, single lane approach intersection is going to work for the full build out of the downs. Given that there's so many different assumptions that goes into that, we're talking about years out, we're talking about projected trips. We've designed this intersection as in cross ropes and cross slopes and infrastructure. Such that it can be expanded for additional lanes in the future if necessary. So one example of that would be on Market Street here. Currently, there's on street parking proposed as close to the intersection as we're comfortable with. And with a little bit of curb reworks of a called minimal rework. We could have a left and a right out at that intersection. And just a little bit expansion into the paver area here. So with that being said. The cross slopes are really the key, the drainage infrastructure, all these items are really the key to kind of set this up for the future. So that in the event that if we ever need something like this and we can monitor the intersection that we can. We can relatively easily produce this product. When to briefly talk about the stormwater and utilities here. So this is an overall utility plan. As Dan mentioned, the pump station 27 is the south of the page here. That's just about complete and we're taking the gravity sewer line. It's a 15 inch line north. About a few hundred feet up to the intersection across street, which is for perspective is just going to be north of where the grandstand building is currently right now. A 12 inch sewer mains can be proposed beyond that and a 12 inch sewer mains we proposed in Cross Street. An eight inch sewer mains can be proposed in Market Street that serve all these lots via gravity. So we've made the initial investment to for the pump station at earlier stages. This is an existing six inch force main that comes down from pump station 26, which is the pump station just south of the Innovation District. We're going to be collecting that in the gravity sewer line and feeding it to pump station 27, which eventually goes out the Higginson Parkway. This is all in line with the sewer master plan. We've been working with the Scarborough Sanitary District quite a bit on this. And this is. Our intention is to keep as the subdivision grows, we keep chewing back that sewer line, if you will, to make sure that everything is served and there's no delayed. Production in any of that. We're going to continue the 16 inch water main north on Downs Road as well. It currently ends just about where the pump station building is. We're going to continue that all the way up and eight inch water mains and Cross Street and Market Street as well. There's overhead power that exists just south of the pump station driveway currently today. We're going to be, and then there's actually a brace pole on the other side of the pump station driveway. So we're replacing the brace pole with a much larger pole. And then adding one more, just about 15 feet north of it before we drop underground for this entire subdivision. So we have to add another pole from based on just essentially real estate on the pole for getting the risers up and down it. I know there was a comment in the staff memo on that and we're committed to going underground. It's just a matter of. Working with CMP on actually getting all the different risers because we're going three phase power underground. And getting that real state on the pole. So we're adding another pole just to be able to drop it down into the subsurface structures. This is an overall grading plan that shows the gravel wetland that Dan mentioned. I do want to mention this gravel wetland is fully approved by the DEP. We've received that permit back in 2020. We're proposing the. Stormwater chloride mitigation system that we've been doing all along on the downs where it directs snow melt water. Directly into the stream and flushes it as in will directly into Willowdale Brook and flushes it. During the winter parts of the years and then the gravel wetland acts as your water quality treatment during the summer months. It's been successful to date in this project and we're proposing it again here. Everything in this initial subdivision. Is stormwater runoff drains to this gravel wetland here. A little portion of Lot Two up in the left hand corner here will go to an isolated grass and drain soil filter. We left that off intentionally off this application because we're not proposing any lot disturbance as part of this. And that'll be come back in front of the board for when that site plan moves forward. It just takes none of the road, just a little bit of lots up here. This gravel weather is also oversized to take additional area north and east of this development. And we've sized the drainage infrastructure as well to accommodate the future flow, provided scorecards as well in our application. I think Dan's going to wrap it up here.
Thanks, Drew. And actually, we didn't mention it, but obviously Three Eye Home is on the agenda this evening. And they factored into the approach in terms of the, to the raised intersection, you know, thinking through ease of. Crossing, actually for their, their planned residents and and I know the central square is a key destination for that project. So. We didn't bring that up as part of the earlier comments, but in terms of next steps. Essentially, we're, you know, going to spend much of the remainder of March and April working with staff and peer review. We've set up. Some specific meetings with the peer reviewers because so that they understand the background behind the design approach to. To town center because it's fairly intricate and have opportunities to kind of work through. Solutions and review before we come back to the board and we'll update the plans. And we're anticipating. You know, allowing for some additional weeks. So we kind of a late April preliminary review versus an early April. To enable that collaboration to occur. You'll also be starting to get applications for kind of sketch plans similar to Three Eye Home for other sites. Over the course of April, May, June within town center because. Want those to track kind of right behind subdivision review and also help kind of give the board context for, for a lot layouts and in. Overall kind of town center development and design approach. So. That will be occurring as we develop plans and we anticipate Lot Four. Would be before you in early April, that that lot essentially across from Three Eye Home and then likely later in April, early May would be. The mixed use building. So I expect that to be coming before you and. You'll get more color graphics and more interesting things to look at. Brian will assure you of that. And all of this is kind of queuing up towards. You know, hopefully a late May, early June approval so that we can start construction, you know, this summer construction season. Critical to kind of get the town center underway and also for. Three Eye Home in particular, they're, they have funding requirements that they need to apply for through main housing that has like an annual. Opportunity. So we're working hard with them on schedule to. And that's why they're the first sketch plan for you to see so that they can kind of move through the process, address board concerns and comments and staff and. Be in position to, to apply to mean housing. Later this, later this season. So that's really what we see kind of as next steps. And this evening, we're. Eager to hear from the board on this initial preliminary, recognizing we're going to be coming back to you, you know, with a tuned up preliminary submission. In late April. So with that, I'll turn it back to, to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dan. This is an item that is available for public comment. Is there any member of the public? In the room who would care to make a comment? Is there anybody online? No one online? No one dashing up to the front from the room? Comment is, is over. I will turn this over to, to the board. Now is the, the chance to make sure that we're really clear on what this is going to look like because it sounds as though. What we're starting off is the, the beginning of a wave. Of sketch plans and applications coming in and it's going to be heavily dependent upon how we work through this. And move on to the, the actual construction requests. Rick, you want to start?
Sure. Dan, you mentioned Lot Two and I didn't hear what your proposed use is going to be. Is that mixed use? Or is it all commercial or what? For Lot Two?
Yeah, Lot Two. We anticipate, if you look up on this screen, Rick, we anticipate where you see it says Lot Two, you know, that end of Lot Two. To be mixed use. So, yep. And then we anticipate maybe more commercial to the left. Lot Two is likely to end up being, you know, potentially three lots. If you can picture those arrows being.
Okay, so you're, you're thinking maybe that's going to get divided.
Yep, yep. And we're anticipating maybe it could be added on to, to the north.
But it's all mixed use. It's, it's not all residential.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Let's see. While you're doing this, will there be access to Route One from the Payne Road? Throughout the construction process? Just to make sure that the town residents can get from the Payne Road to Route One or vice versa if they needed to.
Yeah, we're looking, we're working through. Where, where the alignment would go. That's something that we'd cover before final approval.
Okay, so you'll have that all baked into your submission.
That's really more of a construction sequencing plan that we intend to provide for, correct?
Okay, okay. I was noticing on the plans that the pump station 27. Was is under construction and it was approved in February 2nd of 2022. And I don't find in my records where we even had that on our agenda. Can you shed a little bit of light on how this pump station and I assume there's a building on there?
There is, yep.
Because I don't recall seeing any sort of plans or anything for that pump station. I know we talked about it as part of what you needed to, to deal with. The, the waste, but I don't recall ever seeing anything for that particular lot.
The, well, the lot wasn't created. So right now it's on overall crossroads land. Now we're creating the lot around it, but it was. Reviewed and approved as part of a, one of the residential phases that it serves. So because it serves.
Okay, so it must have been way before February 2nd then.
It was probably the fall that of 21 where the subdivision was reviewed to approve it.
I didn't look that far into my.
Is that right?
We probably need to update the plans then to, to historically recognize that it was approved back in 2021, not 2022.
And the, just to clarify, the February 2022 approval is from the Scarborough Sanitary District. That was essentially.
Oh, okay. That's when the sanitary district said you had the capacity. They could, they could manage the.
Yeah, and they approved our design for the pump station.
Okay, but still, I don't recall any, any sort of. Plans before us on Lot Two unless I'm, my colleagues, I, I don't know, but I kind of like to see what that's going to look like. When, when it's fully built out. I mean, you, you've got to have some lighting there. You must have. A, a building, you got colors, what have you. Yeah. So will that be included in the next submission?
It would be more of an as-built plan.
Sounds like it has to be.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to, to bring that up and I think. You know, staff has, staff in our peer reviewer has laid out a number of, of things to, you know, go back to the. And I'm not going to go over those and I'm certainly not going to ask questions about the raised. Intersection there, although I think that's got some cleverness to it. And I, I, I think I can get along with this kind of. Division of this area. I think you've put some thought into it. I want to make sure too that. When you cross the stream with Market Street. You are now underground at that point all the way through on Market Street, correct? With your utilities?
Yes, Market Street. Is currently approved and under construction with overhead only on the Higginson.
Right, and then once you cross the stream, it goes under.
We actually don't go any further. So power comes from the town center side.
Okay, so power is going to come down from town center on for, for Lot One?
Yeah, Lot One and Two, if you look behind the screen, Lot One, Two. One and Two are served from the Downs Road and then within Market Street all underground. It doesn't come. It's not coming from Higginson Parkway to serve this area of the project.
Got it, got it. No, I'm, I'm, I, you brought me along pretty good here. It seems to make some sense of the hammer or the. I guess that could be called a hammerhead on Cross Street, I believe it is. Is there any, any insight on where that might end up going? Cross Street, once it gets beyond Lot. Four, or three?
I was going to go the network plan. So this can help. So again, orientation is different, but Cross Street is the, the right side of that U in yellow.
Yep.
We're showing Cross Street in yellow, you know, in this subdivision plan. And then we anticipate it's going to continue and connect to. What likely would be front runner extension. So front runner today goes up from Downs Road, Road through the residential phase. And we anticipate it will be extended to connect with Cross Street.
Maybe you can superimpose that in the next submission, just so that we start to see the grid layout of what the downtown district looks like. That would, that would be helpful. Thanks. I think at this point, Madam Chair, I'm not going to get into the traffic or anything. I have more esteemed colleagues that deal with that every day. So I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I will move to the esteemed colleague who understands traffic, Jen.
So Nick, I'm just going to come with all the lighting questions.
Okay.
Um. Okay. I'm, I guess my first question is, I know that in, in some. Instances in other parts of the downs, you have. Choice or by force. Put in roadway infrastructure first and come back second with. Lot build out and in some other cases, lot build out and then finishing. With, with the roadways and sidewalks and things like that. For this raised intersection. What's the thought here? And I understand that we're, that we're early on in the process. And you're still, as discussed, working on ironing out the uses at that corner and probably tenants and things like that. But I'm just curious about what the interim situation here would be like for a raised intersection. I can. I can generally picture it fully built out. So with people using it, with people driving through it, with the sidewalk dining adjacent to it. But in the event that any of those lag, I'm just curious what your vision is for phasing here at kind of a high level in terms of construction.
Sure. If things go the way according to plan, there wouldn't be a significant lag. So if up on this graphic, there's some arrows. So we're under design. Right now on this mixed use building, which is at the corner and I can bring up the pretty picture in a minute, but it's the one that Brian showed. The corner on the right with outdoor dining. So we're working on design pricing right now, conceptual design. And hope to be before the board to show you that, you know, through site plan this spring. And hope to start construction on that later this year. So we anticipate. At the same time or not long after. Market Street Downs Road, that intersection in is in, there's people using it. We're also working on concepts for the central square, you know, and that may lag a little bit behind the mixed use building. And again, we're doing the same exercise on pricing, but we think that's going to be activated, you know, similar in terms of timing. Also, you know, we're working on these resident, this residential site, we're calling Lot Four. And anticipate even if. That central square building is not complete, there's a lot of pedestrians coming out through the central square using that. Crosswalk. So we don't think this, we're going to have like a raised intersection there with. Surrounded by construction, you know, not have active people and active uses at least for very long. I think the least clear is Brian indicated is, is the building in sight north of Market Street. Because we first want to kind of tackle that, the one to the south. So that may lag some. We want to be able to kind of lease up that first building, get some activity. But at least. You know, two legs of this intersection are going to be activated, if you will, around the time that we're completing the intersection.
So the thought isn't, so the thought is to, when you build out the infrastructure portion of the intersection to build it raised, not to do like a.
Correct, yeah.
A base pavement with mini ramps or something like that until the point at which you fully raise the rest of it.
Now, the intention would be to build it raised from the gecko.
Okay. Other questions about capacity? I know there were some comments. I really thought a lot of the. Other questions about capacity, I know there were some comments, um, I really thought a lot of the, um, a lot of the points raised by the peer, the traffic peer reviewer in this one, um, raised a lot of really good points, I thought, and, and one in particular about the capacity of this intersection, um, and Drew, you touched on it a little bit in your presentation, but um I'm, I'm wondering, first of all, if you, you know, you talked about the option down the road for potential widening here of multiple lane approaches at that point, is there anything on any situation that you can envision whereby this intersection would require signalization or meet signal warrants? Or would you, would you do a multi-lane approach with an always stop kind of thing?
So, and kind of a tough question.
I know you don't know any of those answers.
Yeah, and, and Erica's online too, I could help me out, but I'll kind of walk you through, so like I mentioned, we didn't provide a full traffic analysis, which can be provided in the next one. What our thought process behind that, what we've worked with the peer reviewer on developing is full build-out trip generation, trip distribution through this intersection that we think is the absolute max this intersection will ever see. Um, a lot of assumptions went into that, but we started there and looked at a single lane, always stop intersection. And then we kind of tweaked it and said, okay, let's look at some of the queuing, we don't necessarily care too much about the level of service, but we looked at the queuing, we said, we want to make sure it's safe, we don't want to back up into other intersections and work from there into, all right, if we ever see these volumes which are projected beyond fifteen plus years, we have the opportunity to add a left and right turn or a left and through if you're coming on Downs Road. Um, so with it being an always stop, we would anticipate that we'd never see more than just a left and right at a Market Street and leave it as an always stop in that scenario, if traffic patterns change, uses change in the future, and we needed to add a left turn onto, let's say, the Downs Road North approach, we would get rid of the always stop, it would be just a T, it would be just a Market Street stop, and that would be free-flowing, so kind of going back, we don't anticipate ever seeing that we're going to meet signal warrant analysis, um, that's still in review, we're still kind of developing and fine-tuning that. Um, but we're not anticipating that, which is why we've started here.
Okay, um, I just, I'm always looking out for the versions of us, you know, twenty years from now, forty years from now, whatever it is. And I'm sure that twenty years ago or forty years ago, people sitting in these seats were saying similar things about a lot of other intersections that we have in town, we can't predict the future. Um, but this, this just strikes me as, as being limited in terms of capacity and without getting into it, I'll, I'll look forward to more information on that, um, as you come forward with future um, submissions. Another question that I have, it's, it's clear that you are intending to focus on pedestrian priority at this intersection, but it feels a little bit to me, um, isolated, and so I'm curious if you have looked at um, repeating any of the same treatment at uh adjacent intersections, particularly the one at Cross Street and Road to be named to the north, I don't know that we saw that one. Um, and or any, either of the proposed mid-block crossings on Market Street or further down on the Downs Road, and I mention that because I think that the, I think that otherwise the geometry here continues to be um, you know, encouraging of, of vehicular through traffic and uh, and, and higher than desired speeds, and so rather than coming out of the gates here with um, paint and signs and RFBs, which are sort of our classic um, mitigation tools, you know, after the fact, like when we have issues. Because this is essentially a blank slate, it feels like there's the opportunity here to maybe um try to design out some of those problems down the road, and so I'm wondering if you've looked at raised crossings in, in any of those locations uh, and or discuss them with, um, with town staff, if you've discussed them and they're non-starters, then I'm, I'm the one that's behind here, but um I think that that would be another way to sort of reinforce to people that are living and working on the Downs, people that are visiting the Downs. We mean it, we mean it, that, that pedestrian traffic here is a priority, we're encouraging you to walk between lot three and lot two and where you live, um, you know, closer down to Route one. Um, and we're doing that not just at this one intersection, but at a lot of other intersections, and I think that plays into, you know, you, you, you are doing that in other ways through the trail networks and things like that. Um, but I think with the roadway infrastructure, I, I'm, I'm just curious if there's the opportunity to sort of repeat any of that in a way to reinforce, really reinforce that um, kind of priority. That's my big one on that one. Um, as for, um, if you do stick with this, um, with this intersection alignment, one of the things that jumped out at me immediately is that uh, you're proposing not only the, the raised intersection, but um ballards at the head of Market Street. And um, the detail that you included for ballards, I think I only saw one, if there's a different one, my apologies. Um, but I think that this is a location that should receive really, really robust ballards, given that geometry. Decorative, if you want, but, but crash-rated at a minimum, um, and in an effort to protect the uh, activity that you're hoping to attract on the backside of those. Um, there were some, maybe somewhere, um. I'm curious about the uh, the heavy-duty pavers, and I think that came up in some of the staff or peer review comments as well, um, and so I'm not sure if you have additional information on those. Um, I'm curious what the maintenance would be like and whether or not we have any, do we have any of these elsewhere in town? Does anybody know? I, my towns get mixed up, so I don't think, um, I don't think we do. But sometimes there's a little learning curve there on, um, on maintenance, so I'm just curious, salt, sand, heaving, plowing, um, what the vision there is. Um, and the intersection plan that you have C two oh six that shows long, um, detectable warning panels here, which would be required for ADA compliance at a raised intersection like this, it looks like you're proposing. Um, what are you proposing on either side of those, it looks like?
Uh, there are seat walls.
Seat walls, okay. And so the thought there is what, that those would coincide with uh, um, curb, as you introduce curb reveal?
Yeah, and actually, I probably could have described this in the presentation, but the, the seat walls are really more visual, but they're also to try to provide a safe pedestrian crossing so that people aren't crossing either at the ramp or further up, we want to kind of force them, herd them to these crosswalks. Um, the seat walls are at their location. Um, uh, the radii, which is the flush granite curb that goes around um, the corners there are designed for kind of the everyday traffic, but we've provided heavy-duty pavers beyond that, and the seat walls are positioned beyond that so that the larger vehicles can still make the turn, but we're trying to condense the nature of the intersection so that the crossings seem smaller, so it's almost a, a guide, if you will.
Okay, is there any, um, any, will there be any landscaping at this intersection?
Yeah.
Looks like a lot of hardscaping.
Yep, I think between the tree wells on either side and the, and the, the landscaped areas that would ultimately, you know, possibly be in, in the temporary on this side, but in the permanent setting over here as well as on the opposite and kind of the bookend side of the intersection are going to have some plantings, and we'll make sure those are more clear in the application moving forward to for you.
Okay. Um, I think that's it, I have some other comments, but I'll wait for their more detailed in nature, so I'll hold those for next time. Um, I, in particular, I'm just, I'm, I continue to have concerns about the long-term capacity of this intersection well beyond um, you know, what we're looking at here and um just want to make sure that we are taking advantage, we collectively are taking advantage of the the new design, the new construction here versus building ourselves things that will become maintenance or operational challenges later on.
Okay.
Um, but thank you for your uh in-depth presentation. Um, also, a second for, um, always helpful to see the larger roadway network here, and I know that was a staff comment and Rick had the same comment, I just um, at the risk of being redundant, I think it's really important and it's really helpful for us, particularly when you're talking about you know, the fact that, that you, you believe that a lot of the vehicular traffic will bypass this intersection, it's hard for, it's hard for me to picture that based on um, what was submitted, but I know that you have some more um things coming, so be looking out for those, but thanks.
Thank you, I'm going to go to Roger.
Um, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, uh, when I first um saw this intersection in the raised, um, four-inch raised um section, I thought it was pretty creative and um and it, so while you have this screen up right there, the curved pavers, are they, are they going to blend in with the um the pavers that create their four-inch raise, rise, or are they going to be a little bit higher?
The pavers are all.
Are they going to be more divine, defined, or are they going to blend in with the with the, you know, with the contour of the um, the four-inch raised pavers coming, leading up to the, to the platform, more or less?
The intention is that I think the same material paver color scheme would, would be throughout this intersection there as well as, it, it's going to follow a certain grade based on how the raised intersection is, is graded out, but um it's going to be all uniform.
So, so that will not be raised at all? The curved section?
Yes, it will be that, so if you think of it, when you're usually on a sidewalk, you're a little bit above the road, we're just bringing, we're bringing the road up to that level so that all those pavers you see will all be at the same grade with, you know, appropriate slopes.
Okay, so for instance, if somebody were, were in, in a wheelchair or something, they would have no difficulty negotiating from the curved pavers onto the pavers that lead up to the platform. I, I'm referring, I'm, I'm referring to the platform as, as a square center.
Correct, that's all this relatively the same grade, yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, I, I, um, I, I still think it's pretty creative, it looks pretty good. Um, one of the things I read uh in the materials was, I, I think at the previous um um, meeting, there was some discussion of roundabouts. And I just wanted to add this comment, I happen to be in this, in a, um, in an area. I'm down in Florida by Sarasota right now, and I happen to be in this, uh, in a section which was all recently developed. Looked very much like what you guys are trying to do here. And um, their main street going through, they had three, a series of three roundabouts uh, with mixed-use buildings on either side. And um, when I first went through it, I thought, well, that's kind of a neat idea, but then the more I thought about it, I mean, the traffic going around the roundabouts almost um, overrides the pedestrian, I mean, if you're a pedestrian trying to get around those roundabouts, it's, it's, it can be challenging, you know? So I just wanted to add that, my two cents on that. Um, if you could, if you wouldn't mind, Dan, going to your street network, that screen?
Sure.
Okay, uh, one of the things I was, I, I, I've been thinking is, um, that the residents who live down by Route one in the um, the Mill Commons area, the first phase.
Yeah.
It seems to me when they, if they want to head out towards the Turnpike or, well, actually, I wouldn't say the Mills, Mills Common, but more the um town residential north area, that's, that's the one, that's the one that's being developed right now, I believe, right?
Yeah, that's on the screen upper right.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, it seems to me when those people who live there want to get out towards the Turnpike, they're going to go along the Downs Road and they're going to go to that intersection and then they're going to take Market Street. And unlike further north, where I see you have another road, you're kind of uh sketched in there, exactly. Where people from, from the Innovation District, if they want to head south, they could actually come down the Downs Road, you know, and take that, one of those side streets and, and get on the market right onto the Parkway. So, the, I, I can see a potential problem with the residents up there in the uh, the town center north. They're, they're going to use, they're going to be going through that intersection. I don't, I don't see any other way, you don't have any other avenue for them to, to bypass that intersection other than um, uh, front runner.
Mm-hmm.
As a possibility, and going all the way over and then connecting with that one of those streets to the, to the north of Market.
Yeah, correct, yep.
Um, and that's probably what they will do, but other, you know, other than that, they're, they're basically going to be stuck using that intersection.
Yeah, and actually, yep, I mean, Drew mentioned it, we've been working on the traffic projections and the analysis, um, and though there are a number of housing units, you know, from a number standpoint, that's the least traffic generation of the whole project, you know, that residential end, so um, we can provide the peer reviewer and the board more information on that, but out of the movements, that wasn't a particularly heavy movement, um, if you compare it with some of the other movements, especially more commercial movements, um, but we'll get that for you, Roger, to, to look at.
See, see, I don't see most residents who live in town, say, east of Route one, if they want to get to um exit forty-two or like that, I, I don't really see them driving through the Downs. I mean, I don't think I would, I would just go down Route one and get on the Parkway. And um, I, I don't see them doing it, but I can see, especially as you build up more, um, you know, that you extend that front runner, and again, front runner, if you extend it, I can see, I can see the people bypassing that intersection completely, um, which would be a, probably a good thing. Um, and I hate to bring this up, but I just, I just kind of curious, when you, when you were developing the town center, did you, did you give any thought to moving that town center green area up further east? Maybe a block? And it just allowed the Downs Road to be, to continue to be a main road going through there? Do you know what I?
I'll look at Brian, I mean, we, Brian can elaborate, but we really wanted the central square, um,
Okay.
to be right in the heart and to be an amenity that commercial, a restaurant, a retail wants to be across from, and it's going to be more than a green, you know, the, and we'll bring a site plan before the board, you know, later this spring, but it's going to have likely a brewery and other amenity space, lawn area, it's going to be quasi-commercial and really be the gathering place, so our design intent was to put it right in the heart, not kind of slide it out of the way, we want it to be that kind of magnet uh for the project. And um, a little bit of congestion is frankly the, a sign of a very successful city, I mean, so we're not trying to be free-flowing at this intersection, we're trying to be kind of balanced and controlled. Um, but level of service isn't really the goal, you know, for moving cars through the intersection.
Okay, what do you, uh, how, what, what about um trucks, you know, if you're going to have mixed use with retail and restaurants and breweries or whatever? Um, you're going to have trucks going through that same area.
We are, and Drew mentioned, sort of, he has kind of showed what, how larger vehicles can make the turn, but the intention is that particularly the road, the roads you see kind of lower left from the intersection
Yeah.
are intended to be for um, more of the deliveries, um, and those are also, those roads are kind of on the back-of-house side of the buildings that are going to be fronting Downs Road, so you'd expect most deliveries would occur uh using those roads. Um, but if a truck, it does go through these intersections or this intersection, um, I think the turning radius is designed to accommodate that, that fire truck, to accommodate trucks. Um, but the intention is to, you know, direct them on a regular basis to the other roadways.
Okay. Um, uh, my last question is, um, on the intersection, the raised intersection, is that, is there anything like that anywhere else around here, around um, the greater Portland area or Southern Maine? Because I don't recall ever seeing one, I think it's a good idea, but I, I've never, I don't recall seeing one.
There's, I was actually in Burlington last, this weekend. And Burlington, Burlington, Vermont, sorry. Not in the immediate vicinity, but one of the very successful street called Church Street, which people probably know about in Burlington, is a walking mall. It's an old street. They converted the whole street to a pedestrian mall.
Yeah.
But there are a number of cross streets, and those cross streets all come up to grade and it's not that obvious, you know, cause as you're driving, four inches isn't very much. Six inches isn't very much. And those streets cross the pedestrian mall. So that's an example that just comes to mind, cause I was there yesterday. But we'll give you some other examples. I know there's one in Linfield, Mass. There's, there's some others that we can point you and the board to, to kind of give you a better sense, Roger, of, of real-life examples.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's good. I think, I think Jen's suggestion on having raised intersections at those other streets, cross street and the other similar one, may be worth considering because they would, they would create some more, you know, traffic calming features. But I, I like the idea. I think it's pretty creative and hopefully it will work, work out well. I don't have any other further questions right now, Rachel. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Jim? Thank you, Madam Chair. Following up on, just looking at the main intersection real quick, when Jen was talking about ballards earlier, maybe we'll look at the review state, review the standards for ATFP, that's Anti-Terrorism Enforced Protection for the build, the construction of these ballers, because those tend to be more, I guess, better designed to withstand impact of vehicles and things like that. It's a much more prevalent issue in today's world, unfortunately, but we definitely wanna see bollard protection for pedestrians, especially at that intersection, and if that's gonna be an open area in there. Looking more towards Roger's question, can you, cause I'm, I'm thinking of Commercial Street downtown, where downtown Portland, where delivery trucks are parked in sort of the center median for deliveries and so on. Can you include in your plan to provide road signage to really physically, you know, as best as possible, direct these delivery trucks to take alternate routes rather than go through the downtown? That tends to be a little bit more efficient, especially, I'm just envisioning, you know, cars parked on either side, a lot of pedestrians going around all over the place. The turning radiuses may, may certainly be there for these large trucks to go across, but can't account for someone's poor taste in their parking. So having more directed signage for delivery vehicles to take alternate routes around and just avoiding that T-intersection, or even adding another separate road that goes around the entire area just for delivery vehicles, just to avoid that, is something that I would like to see at least addressed or considered or, or commented on. Obviously not tonight, but for the next presentation. Can we go back to the conceptual renders of the, the light commercial feature piece? T-intersection? Yeah. Yes, thank you. So do you, and, and this may be a little bit far ahead, but is the plan for those, for businesses at this intersection to really be sort of the anger businesses for this location? Are they really gonna, are they gonna be, whatever businesses that go in there, is it the intent for them to sort of help carry the image of this downtown vibe and feel for this intersection?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and I guess you have, I mean, not to dig deep into this, but do you have anticipations of what some of those businesses might be or interested parties already or?
We have a lot of interested parties that I've actually been waiting on, the town center. There's a laundry list, actually. And so right now, we're working on, obviously, building design and some initial pricing. So then we can start to work on, okay, does this lease rate work and does this space work? So we have a variety of restaurants that are interested in being within the project. Some are interested in this location. Some are actually interested in that, the first lot off of Higgin's Parkway, you know, near Allagash. We have some retail. We have some service that wanna be in town center. So we've been designing the first mixed-use building and actually this amenity building with those end-users in mind. And we're gonna, you know, we're starting to kind of get reactions to our layout. We see this, this amenity building being really kind of a mix. You know, hopefully there's a, you can maybe make it out. It says Brew Pub, you know, a brewery restaurant on the right. Be an ideal spot for that activity. You see that covered pavilion, which is really kind of a place for a variety of things that happen. You can just hang out. There could be activities. There could be, you know, yoga in the park kind of thing that's happening under that covered pavilion. And then the area on the left is potentially kind of amenity space for the whole project. And then what this plan doesn't show very well is the surrounding kind of outdoor space that we're, this is really kind of zoomed in on the intersection, so you get a good sense of that building, which we want to anchor the intersection, but around it is gonna have different outdoor amenities that would be the, be for the project, also be for the entire community. So we're still, we're early. We're in the sausage-making, as Brian would say, stage. But we're getting close, close to kind of being able to bring it forward to the town.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Addition, with regard to future growth in this area, mimicking my colleague's comments about wanting this, this centerpiece intersection to really try to be as, I hate using the phrase, but future-proof or just planning for any sort of consideration in the future with regard to increase in traffic, population growth in the space. And, and I appreciate having the, the foresight to sort of design this intersection with the thought in mind that it could be expanded in the future. And I like to see that kind of forward thinking, especially on something like this, which, you know, the next forty, fifty, sixty years, people will still be using this area. Have you given any consideration? I know we talked about it briefly at the previous, the sketch plan phase of this, but a multi-story parking facility, rather than having the sort of open parking lots, has there been a consideration of having one close to this downtown area here? Again, thinking for the future, why not have something like that designed now, knowing that, you know, the, the geotech and the survey and the ground can hold such a structure or how large that could be in the future? And maybe some, you know, an architectural feature of that for people being on the roof to sort of get an aerial view of the entire Downs. I'm just seeing, as this is becoming more popular, you know, you're going with Costco and Allagash and other folks that have really expressed interest in here, and also myself as well, wanting to go here as well. It's just gonna be more and more popular as a destination. So can, have you considered a multi-story parking structure? And is that something that we could see as part of like a massing diagram on this and where would it be located?
We've actually spent a lot of time talking about it. And, but we also have a lot of, right now, we have an availability land and we have the, kind of the need to make the numbers work for the, the initial phases of town center. So our current direction is to be very deliberate about kind of identifying a location where it's possible to kind of go vertical with parking. And it could be that that parking starts as surface, kind of as, a lot of older downtowns have kind of the public lot, whereas it's like the overflow parking that's off-street. We're picturing something like that, where initially it could be surface parking, but it's sized, to your point, it's sized to kind of go vertical. It's in the right location within the town center for kind of ease of access, close to retail, but not in a key location that it shouldn't be. And also from a kind of a geotechnical and construction standpoint. So we know we can, you know, if the numbers work and there's the warrant for it, the demand for it, we could kind of execute on that. So that's been a lot of our conversation as we've laid out kind of town center, thinking about, okay, this is our short-term plan, and this is kind of our long-term plan in terms of surface parking.
Could we see that as far as even if it's just an area where you've considered that this would be where a multi-story parking structure would go, that's near to the circle? Cause if you're, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, folks going here during lunch hour or something like that for yoga, they wanna go in and out real fast. They wanna be in there. They have a very limited amount of time and window. So I'd like to see what your thoughts would be on where it would go in there to help facilitate, you know, that person coming from another part of town or South Portland or Portland, going to an event here, meeting someone for lunch, being able to go, park there, get out without having to worry about, you know, parking, you know, a quarter mile away or a tenth mile away somewhere else along that street, thinking, you know, this is gonna be very busy, very popular and very successful.
Yeah, we can, we'll talk as a team and we'll generate some concepts for you to, to understand what we're thinking.
Appreciate that. Thank you. One comment I had on the lighting, I saw that 3,000 K color temperature for the LED fixtures based on the photometric plan. That's great. As just my, my thing, just can, continue to review. And as you see, any kind of exterior light fixtures have them specified at 3,000 K. I believe that is part of the town standard for their ordinance, but 3,000 K for building-mounted fixtures and for pole-mounted fixtures, we'd want to see in there. Cause nothing is, it's very obvious when you're driving through and you have different color temperatures in your light fixtures and it just doesn't quite look right. Let's see, the only other question I have, the masking diagram for multi-levels parking structure I'd like to see. My last one, because my, my colleague, Noah Perla, is absent this evening, but speaking for him and granted, Kevin, that was a topic when we approved the, the right-of-way for the intersection on Route 1. You've confirmed that the grass seed and plantings, they all conform to State of Maine DEP list, that they don't, we're not, we don't have any species on the plants now that the DEP has flagged as invasive or do not plant. Recall that conversation.
That's been our intention. We'll go through it again before the next submission.
Great. Yeah, cause I know he'll certainly be here for this next one and we don't want to, we sort of wanna see that addressed. And understanding that some of these may have already been planted already in earlier stages. If so, then that it is what it is at this point, but going forward, we certainly wanna make sure that nothing's being planted that is on that do-not-plant list by the DEP. Sorry, my last question, Madam Chair. For Brian from Cube 3, if we can go to the drawing that shows the multi-level housing and its proximity to the downtown spot? Who's the multi-unit housing? One of the earlier slides, I believe.
Is it just plan view?
Yeah, it's just the plan view. I think it's one of these. My question is, yeah, that, that's perfect. Thank you. Again, thinking about downtown Portland and how a lot of the older buildings there have been converted into residential, with their existing restaurants and bars and a lot of music, the live music scene and activity there. There's been a lot of issues about noise complaints and, you know, toxic curfews and things like that. Is that a concern that we should have here, looking at the three-I homes and the multifamily units that close to the downtown space there? Considering that, you know, we wanna have pubs and breweries and, and, you know, just high, high, high area motion going on down there. And not to say that this is something like rock and roll, where, you know, we're gonna be having, you know, massive live concerts, but thinking more of what's going on in downtown Portland, where a lot of people are complaining that, oh, the bar is too loud downstairs.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great question, actually, and something that we, we are thinking about quite a bit. The solution really lies in the construction of the buildings and how they're put together. I think when you're, you're dealing, you know, we, working around the country, you see this everywhere, right? You see the repositioning efforts and uses change. And, and I mean, our office is in an old mill building and, you know, so you have windows that don't comply with anything. You're missing insulation. Sound kind of gets in everywhere. And I think that's true of Portland. I mean, it's a lot, there's a lot of older buildings. There's some newer buildings. I, I think what we should do to make sure that we're not gonna have that issue is just really take a look at the construction type of these buildings as they're evolving. I think one thing that will make a difference, energy codes where they are now are driving construction to be tighter than it ever has been in the past. And that's kind of a natural noise mitigation approach as well. So I, I don't really see it being a problem. We haven't seen it as a problem where you're dealing with all new construction, like we're dealing with all new road networks. You typically see that where you have older cities that are really evolving into these exciting and vibrant places and you have old structures that don't meet codes or that have single-pane glass or, you know, brick with no insulation. So I think it's a great concern. I think it's something we should pay attention to in the documentation of the buildings that are happening here. But, but I think, I, I think it will be mitigated just by the fact that it's new, but I, I think it's something we should pay attention to.
Yeah, and understanding construction means and methods, so something that's handled separately when, when, when those all, those all go to plan in construction, but maybe a consideration of more greenery, trees, bushes, kind of demarcating the spaces between some of the residential and the commercial, that could help as well as just absorbing some of the sound.
Totally agree. Hundred percent. And, and I think we're planning, you know, Dan had alluded to it a little bit. The, the whole Lot 3 space in the middle is going to be a fairly rich mixture of hard and soft scape. And by having residential around the edges, but an absorber in the middle, I think will really help kind of manage that a little bit. And frankly, it was one of the considerations to answer our earlier comment about Downs Road just being this kind of through street. I think when you do that, you not only increase potential traffic speeds, but you also get a lot more sound bouncing back and forth between buildings. So I think having a softer space and a more flexible space adjacent to a real strong retail edge, I think we'll start to manage some of that.
Great. I guess as it be, as with the next, with the next iteration, if we could see, just kind of noted more focused areas, just calling that out just so that we could see it.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, for sure.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, thanks.
No, Rocky made a good point that probably didn't cover, to Brian's point, on this plan in enough detail, kind of how we've arranged town center. So with Brian's assistance, really to the, to the south, Jim, kind of away from kind of the heart of this intersection is the multifamily. So we're, we're having that be on the south side closest to Town Center Residential.
Right.
Three-I home, and I know they're gonna do their presentation. They actually have on the first floor some kind of non-residential space closest to our mixed-use buildings. This is the mixed-use building that you'll see soon. And then this pavilion that we've alluded to, kind of could be a brewery. And then across the street is another mixed-use building on the first floor being kind of commercial restaurants. So we've tried to, in addition to building construction, kind of cluster-like uses.
Yep.
While having some richness and kind of being mixed, but having the ground floor commercials be near each other and better neighbors for, and then kind of focusing the true residential kind of more to the south. So, but we can get into more detail at the next round, so you understand that, those methods.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that. I mean, for certain demographic, that is an ideal location to want to be living with all the sounds included. But then in another demographic, maybe not. And, you know, seeing anything that could go in there, again, looking at downtown Portland. But I appreciate your answers. Thank you very much. And I guess the, the key phrase on this one would be more noted softscapes. Thank you. I'm all set, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And it is my turn. Dan, in terms of the parking, parking lot or parking structure, you might wanna take a look at the Westbrook proposal along their main street. Don't know if, how far it's gotten. And I know they had some problems sourcing steel when, when the price of steel went up, but they had proposed for funding a parking garage with senior housing, affordable senior housing and open space area on the top of it. So, and it was tied up to a hydroponic garden along the side of it. So that's a, something to take a look at. I don't know what stage it's in. But it, it looked pretty impressive and pretty expensive. But that's, that goes to Jim's question and idea about taking a look at, there's, there's no reason why a parking garage can't be multipurpose. So that would be something to look at. I'm going to go back to Rick Mine King's, pretty much his first comment about the pumping station. And, you know, when the, the pumping stations are at the Innovation District or they're to the rear of anything residential and they're kind of out of the way, that's, that's one thing. You can't, you really can't see them or they're, they're blending in. That's, that's one thing. You can't, you really can't see them or they're, they're blending into the appropriate area. This pumping station is right on Downs Road. So I would like to take a look at, understanding that it's being built now. I would like to take a look at what you've got there, the landscaping uh, and any fencing. Because all of a sudden we have a pumping station that's kind of the introduction to the center of the town. So I, I, I think it would be important for us to uh, take a look at it and provide whatever suggestions and advice we can. On how to, how to screen that or how to make it more of a welcoming, uh, welcoming view to people coming in. When will market be connected all the way to Higas?
So this subdivision plan approves the ability to connect um. Downs, Downs Road to where market hands off from Higas Parkway. So it'll be part of this phase one.
I, and, and the reason I have a concern about that is as we originally discussed this whole master plan. At some point, uh, Route One was going to be, the Route One entrance was going to be essentially residential. That's was going to be taking more people into the residential area. And the concept that was presented was basically that um, more people would be coming in directly from Higas or down from Payne. Visitors, uh, trucks, things like that. So it becomes, it becomes important. As you're building along uh, the Downs Road and into this town center area, it becomes important to relieve any. Any uh, traffic, as much traffic as you can from the Route One residential entrance. So uh, it's good to know that you're going to be connecting that pretty fast. And will that then be the major area, a major route for construction traffic?
Yeah, it's going to be, it certainly won't be the Route One end. So we think it's a combination of market, but also up to Payne Road. And moving well away from kind of the Route One residential area of the project.
Okay, very good. What else have I got? Yeah, I talked about Lot Four. That encompasses the grandstand. Uh, and it seemed to me from one of your slides that. You're going to be working in that area this spring and summer. When is the grandstand going down?
Before we are working in that area. Um, you know, we're working right now on um, selecting a contractor to kind of remove those structures. So we anticipate it's going to be um, you know, in the late spring, I think at this point, um, early summer. And so both the grandstand and then the clubhouse would be removed before a lot, the entirety of Lot Four can be developed.
Okay. I've got a concern about parking and it's going to bleed over into the presentation from three I. And it was mentioned in the memo from the, the staff. At some point, I have a real concern that we're going to double promise on-street parking. That uh, it's easy to say, well, we will add a ten more spaces with on-street parking. So I now have a concern as we get into the town center. That we are creating a situation of on-street parking where visitors will not be welcome. Or where people who live in the three I building. Won't be able to actually have on-street parking and they'll be looking to go elsewhere because somebody will want to come in and go to the restaurant. So I would like to see a scorecard of on-street parking, and that was mentioned in the staff memo. They might not have used the term scorecard, but we've talked about it before. If not the last meeting, then the prior meeting, I think I mentioned. The need for now to start really keeping track of on-street parking. Before we as a board start saying, yes, it's fine for those ten spots to be counted as part of your parking allotment. When, when indeed it might not be fine.
Sure, we can do that.
Okay. I also seem to recall from the master plan that there was a road off of Market Street. As you head towards Downs Road uh, on the right. That circled in back of what is now three I in that corner building. That contained a larger parking area that was going to be accessible, and I don't see that on this plan.
We, we're not planning a road there. Um, we're planning interconnected driveways, one for three I that would connect to the mixed use building. Obviously, you don't this evening have the mixed use building kind of site plan to see that connection. But that, that would be how access would occur to the parking behind both three I and then the mixed use building.
And nothing would exit onto the Downs Road?
No, there would, they would connect to, this might be the best graphic to show you. So if you can see it here. This um, intersection location driveway um, would. Would be that driveway, you know, that would connect into parking behind the mixed use building. You don't have the benefit of obviously seeing the mixed use building. But it's roughly where the box is for Lot One. And then three I. You, you see their tentatively planned driveway here. Um, that would be the access to, to three I. And maybe their, their sketch plan would do a better job of showing it, obviously.
All right. Could you show me again where, where the driveway?
See this, I, see that cross, the crosshatching, it's right here. If you can see the cursor, let me go to a better.
So, so, so there's an entrance and an exit to the parking lot, one on Market Street and one on Scarborough Downs Road?
Yes. This shows it a little bit better. Um, if I go to.
So what, what's to prevent people from using that, uh, saying, oh, look, parking over there. Uh, on their way in and using that for. Parking to go to the restaurant. Or to go to the town's center, the amenities building.
Signage and design of where the parking is and, and, and access to it. We can work further on that with the board on through site plan for the mixed use building. But that, our intention on the mixed use building, not to get into site planning details, but to have parking. Closest to Market Street and being separate for retail, restaurant parking in addition to on-street. And then having parking that's more behind the building, which would be assigned and signed. If you're a resident, you'd have a number and you would say resident parking only, um, is how we intend to address it. But we can review those details with the board.
I, I think you need to, because um, if the on-street parking is going to be limited. Basically are available for visitors and extremely limited. People are going to, people are going to say, that's a parking space. Uh, and they're going to be using that and they're going to be taking spaces away from residents. Uh, and spaces away from uh, the business on, on the corner. You can put up all the signs you want, uh, and people looking for a parking space that kind of, kind of ignore them. They're going to look at it as a, a giant parking lot unless there's some sort of enforcement or um, gate. Or barrier, some sort of barrier. I, the, the other reason to be very careful about the on-street parking. Is deliveries. If you have a residential area, a building, you're going to have um, FedEx coming by. You're going to have deliveries made. You're going to have DoorDash. You're going to have a, a lot of activities of people going into the buildings. And if they don't have spaces to park in the front. Those trucks are going to try and find places to park again in the rear. Uh, and then try to figure out how to get into the buildings from there. So I, I still have some reservations around the traffic flow and how you're going to be managing the, the parking in that area. So I, I am hopeful that you're going to um, come up with some, some ideas about how that is managed. Yeah, and three I, the three I building, will they have access all the way through? In other words, you, you, you say that there's one, one uh, driveway essentially for the three I. Can they use the one on Market Street as well?
The intention is to have them be interconnected. Yeah, so far. That's been the intention. Yep.
Okay, without um, without some careful design, that's going to become a cut through. For people who decide they're coming from Higas Parkway and they want to eliminate uh, the, the three-way stop at Market and Scarborough Downs. That, that will become a cut through, whether it's supposed to be or not. It's human nature. Sooner or later, they would see a way to do that. I can see me doing that exactly. So I think that whole back area in terms of parking has to have some very careful consideration.
Agreed. Yeah. And I think that team is ready to present their approach to traffic calming and, and surface treatment back there. So um, those are great comments. I think they can begin to address those this evening.
And that's why we decided to sequence this the way we did. So sequencing this. Is there any other questions? From the board? Have we, are you, are you comfortable? Do you have any additional questions, Dan?
No, I think, I think we're great. Uh, appreciate the time this evening and we're going to work with staff on. Tuning up our submission for another round of preliminary. So I appreciate all the great comments and questions and we'll be back to you with some follow-up answers.
And, and I also like the, the intersection as you've got it at Market and, and the Downs. I think that's going to be. It's visually, it looks good. It looks. It looks welcoming and I think that's uh, been the design all the way along. We just have to make sure that we're not encouraging people to zip through there. So thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is uh, Preservation of Affordable Housing LLC is requesting a sketch plan review. Of a four-story sixteen thousand eight hundred and thirty square foot housing facility for physically disabled persons. The project is located at the intersection of Scarborough Downs Road and the future Market Street assesses map R fifty-two, Lot Four. For this, for the town. Eric?
Thank you. So uh, Preservation of Affordable Housing partnering with three I uh, is seeking a sketch plan review from the planning board of a fifty-one unit. Housing, uh, multifamily housing for folks with disabilities. This would be split between thirty-one uh, one-bedroom units, sixteen two-bedroom units and four three-bedroom units. This, at this point, is just a sketch plan to discuss the layout, building orientation and possible site design for the project. It would be followed by a formal site plan application, which would need to be reviewed by the planning board. Staff has provided a full site plan uh, review set of comments for ease of uh, site plan preparation for the applicant. With, with parking net residential, net residential density calculations and design of the building needing additional detail. Or review by the board come the full site plan. And with that, I would turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And for three I.
Autumn, I can't share my screen just yet. I am. Oh. I've got it now. Good evening. My name is Paul Lynette. I'm the founder and president of Three I Housing of Maine. We're a five oh one C three nonprofit. Uh, we established uh, our operations in twenty twenty. I'm very pleased to be here this evening to open a discussion about our innovative supportive housing project. The first of its kind in Maine that we believe will be an integral part of the Downs development. Our name is descriptive of our mission. As the materials presented to the board detail. Three I Home at the Downs is designed with the utmost attention to the environment. Our building is comprised of fifty-one individual apartments. Featuring universal design principles to promote independent living options. For people with mobility impairments and physical disabilities. That's the first I in our name. Independent living options. Through a federal grant we have been awarded. Innovative assistive smart home technology will be tailored to our tenants. Innovative technology, that's the second I. It will enable our tenants to exercise autonomy throughout the building and in their individual units. Through our building features, which will include passive house principles, which our um, our architect will respond to later. And our programming, we believe that this project will set a standard so that people with disabilities can live within the community. Rather than be relegated to institutional placement. That's the third I, an integrated home and community setting in a vibrant downtown area. Close to work, recreation and socialization. The visual, the vision that I just summarized is the result of focus groups, feedback from potential residents. And most importantly, the lived experiences of people in Maine and elsewhere. Who understand the need for affordable, accessible housing. I want to thank the board for your consideration. And as I turn it over to Corey Fellows, Vice President of Real Estate Development at our co-developer, Preservation of Affordable Housing. I do want to express Three I Homes gratitude to the Crossroads Group for their collaboration throughout this process. And to the, to the design team that Poa has brought with us here tonight. The fact that this dream team has come together around the three I home concept. Speaks volumes to their commitment to the project. One that will be a model to address a key social determinant of health. Accessible supportive housing for literally thousands of people in our state. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I'll be here if I can answer questions. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Corey Fellows.
Thanks, Paul, and thank you, board. Um, it's great to be here on the other side of the podium tonight. My name is Corey Fellows. I'm here tonight representing Preservation of Affordable Housing or PoA. We're a Boston-based national nonprofit that owns and manages over thirteen thousand units of affordable housing in eleven states. We're not yet in Maine, but we're excited about changing that soon. And I'm personally excited about that as a long-term Scarborough resident, the fact that this has all come together at this point. We've still got a long way to go, but we're excited to be at this stage. This is a big milestone for us. I want to briefly introduce our, our team. You know Drew from Coral Palmer. Gary Kane, our project architect from the architectural team out of Massachusetts. We also are working with a, with a Portland-based accessibility consultant as well. And then I believe uh, online are Nick Aceto from Aceto Landscape Architects. As well as my PoA colleague, Vito Shklosky, who's our senior project manager. And you'll probably be seeing and hearing from her in the future. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Drew so he can get into the plan and also happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Corey. Drew Gaggen with Coral Palmer. I'm going to walk um, the board through our proposed plan here today. That's the project team that Corey just introduced. This is kind of showing context relative to the master plan that was actually in front of you at the last agenda meeting. So you can see Scarborough Downs Road cutting through the middle of the page here in Market Street. Creating that Lot One that we were just looking at. Um, this is that anticipated location of that mixed use building that we're all talking about. And then the highlighted um, with the, with the colors here are, is the three I home site. I'm just putting this back on the engineering drawings that we were just looking at for a little bit more context. The raised intersection that had some discussion was up here. So you can see the context and um, the three I home project looking right at Cross Street. Regarding the access that we were also just talking about, we're proposing an access off Scarborough Downs Road, right at the southern portion. So plan right portion of the lot. Um, and then working with the Crossroads Development Team will be providing secondary access. Down along Market Street. So this would be off-site, but it would be in interconnected driveways. So development program and Paul touched on these, we have fifty-one apartments. Um, the breakdown's right here on the screen, hundred percent affordable. One hundred percent accessible and one hundred percent independent living for this proposed development. Some of the design parameters, and this is a zoomed in version of the site plan here that we really wanted to convey to the board here. Was completely accessible design of this parking lot. So as you can see, we have an abundance of ADA parking between van. Um, and standard ADA parking as well as some additional. and standard ADA parking, as well as some additional standard spaces located on the plan south. So we've really taken a careful attention to the accessible nature of this development. And some of these highlight our flush granite curb, Wunner-style drop-off area and parking lot along the backside here. So this would all be at grade. We'll have appropriate slopes, but essentially the one big ADA ramp, if you will, right across the front of this parking here. There's some, some raised planter islands located along here to break up the parking in this area. And then some nice paver treatments and material changes as you're working through the site here. So you can see that with the different brick-looking hatch. Those are anticipated, anticipated to be pavers and utilized as also crosswalks throughout the, throughout the site here. We're proposing a 22-foot drive aisle on the southern part of the, of the site as long, as well as a 24-foot drive aisle kind of on the planned south portion. So we'll be requesting a waiver as the staff memo noted from 25 feet to 24 and 22 on this side. We provided the extra two feet clearance within the parking spaces here to still give that 42-foot section that we've been holding. The main entry of the building and Gary Kane from the architectural team will get into this, but is located on the northern side of the building facing Scarborough Downs Road, providing some outdoor place-making area here. We're going to detail this out during the site plan application, but we provided a nice space here to engage with the street. Utilities and drainage-wise, we have just typical utility connections coming from Scarborough Downs Road and we're planning these and incorporating them into the subdivision design as well. So fire, domestic water services, underground three-phase power, sanitary sewer, as well as natural gas connections near the anticipated service entry of the building, which is on the planned south side. So jumping back up to the first page here, we have a few standard parking spaces with a small drive aisle for small deliveries and, and just kind of the, the service area, if you will, of the site. Drainage-wise, there's a main trunk line that will, that cuts through the site and goes on to the planned gravel well and down on the south of the site. So we're anticipating using that for some of our drainage collection, as well as a few other basins. And all the runoff will be tributary to that gravel wetland. So there will be none on site for, as far as stormwater treatment facilities. Getting into the parking, we're proposing 41 total onsite parking spaces between van-accessible standard ADA and parallel parking. Standard spaces are on the south side of the building. So again, jumping back up here, these are the ones I'm talking about. So we understand this is we're requesting less parking than the multifamily standard from the town of Scarborough. And really, this is based on what the applicant feels that the development, the program actually needs. So we're in a really unique situation where this is a completely accessible parking, accessible building. And we really feel that 41 total onsite parking spaces are what this development is going to need. And in order to justify some of this, we, we found a similar development and kind of on the outskirts of Boston, as you will. That's 0.6 spaces per unit. And this project onsite provides 0.8 spaces per unit. If you include the on-street parking and the immediate vicinity of the project, we're near closer to 1.4 spaces per unit. So in our application package, we provided 33 spaces that are directly adjacent to the site. We're not requesting or trying to allocate those spaces specifically for this development. Again, the 41 onsite parking spaces, we feel are adequate for the site and for this use. So they were just intended to show that there's additional spaces for visitors or additional abundance of spaces around the site. But we do feel that the 41 onsite are adequate for this use. This is another conceptual rendering of the site here. And I'm going to let Gary Kane talk about this one a little bit more.
Good evening, folks. Gary, Gary Kane with the architectural team. We've done a lot of work with Corey's team over the years and we're very, very excited to work on this project. Accessible housing is very near and dear to myself, as well as, as you've heard from other members of the team. So it's an exciting project and really Dan and Rocky have put together a very thoughtful master plan and we're really excited to work on the first building that's going to be, you know, right around the town center. Actually, if I could just back up, back up to the, to the master plan. I guess you could see my, my, you could see the cursor. So there's just a couple of ideas in looking at the building, you know, taking, you know, taking the master plan that Brian's team has put together. This was just a, a large volume of block. We haven't departed from that, that general master plan, but this, we're adding, you know, we're adding real dimension and texture to, to that block. We have a couple of ideas. One of the things, as I looked at the master plan in the town center, I thought that there was a, there was a real interesting asymmetry, almost, almost symmetry, but subtle asymmetry across, around, about Market Street and the center of the town center. And as you notice, on the street that borders the left side, you know, there's, there's no cross street. It is a T-intersection, but the buildings are, are separated and you've got a sort of a different condition. And on Cross Street, again, you have a T-shaped intersection and, you know, you're basically hitting the blunt face of this, of the building. So that's an interesting asymmetry. And I think it adds for a little real unique or an interest around, around the center that you're not just treating every corner, you know, very much the same. So we thought that that was just an interesting piece of the design. So we just put together, you know, just two, two basic ideas or a few basic ideas. The common spaces is primarily a residential building on the ground floor. On, you know, plan left, sort of plan west around this corner between, besides having a Downs Road entrance, all of our sort of common space and public space is located, you know, plan left. We also have a main entrance off of our driveway side. So this is the sort of the active side of the project. You know, I could say that, I could say that Plan Right is the service side, but this is a residential building. You don't have a tremendous amount of service. We've got a little bit of, we basically have got maintenance entrance and sort of, we've got a trash. We've got a trash activity that has to happen at this, this, you know, southeastern portion. But I think the idea was to focus the real public, public activity along the north, you know, facing the town center. As you look at this, this plan, the building, the program, I think we're fully at sort of the volume and shape. We're at a fully like a schematic design level. This landscape plan is still conceptual. I think the what we're showing you for the sort of the layout of the roadway and the patterns is, is advanced. When we do make our next submission, the landscape will be more developed. Take, just take the green with a grain of salt or the, any kind of tree locations. But this is basically the space that we have around the building to work with. And it'll be much more, much more developed as we continue. As I mentioned, we have our public, excuse me, our active, our active parts of the program is plan left. And as we were talking about just the parking, how the parking is going to function, with this building being 100% accessible, you know, we, we would have loved to have had a underground parking garage for, for residents. This is, I think this is a hybrid approach. I think what we wanted to do is we wanted to create at least a covered, covered access from, from the drop-off area, you know, into the building on, on the parking lot side. And so, so the common areas are basically designed so that we can, we can enter off of Downs or enter off of the parking. Any kind of package deliveries or drop-offs can also happen along the driveway. As Drew was mentioning, the sort of the flush curb condition along the south side, south side of the building. The we have taken the overall design, I'd say that the exterior envelope, this is still sort of conceptual. This is really was the first we presented to the team for the first time a week or two weeks ago. Of just a couple of simple ideas. We basically have just looked at the exterior of the building. We tried to design it with sort of two textures. The, the materials are primarily going to be a fiber cement panel, combination of panels and lap siding. And we've kind of designed that with sort of just two different sort of colored textures, a sort of darkish texture and a light texture, sort of just lacing them and just providing some variety around the building. And then we've got some masonry, some, you know, sort of white color that's sort of signifying the main entrances and the public areas around the building. So just a couple of different materials to sort of break up the facade and sort of show what the program is. Additionally, along this, this sort of axis, which is coming from Cross Street, you know, we wanted to create a, you know, a series of bays, our living room bays. We've got five, a series of five bays that come, that sort of, sort of ends the vista looking down Cross Street. And at the base of them, since this is, you know, it's a fully residential building, we've designed these to sort of look like direct, direct level entrances off of the sidewalk. They're going to be sort of like a front stoop. All of the apartments are entered off, are, you know, are accessed off of an internal corridor, but we're just building a front stoop. Hopefully with like a raised bed, something for the residents to be able to use a raised flower bed and just some, some personal space there, but something to activate, activate this facade so that we don't just have a, a wall of windows. And we're trying to just add a little bit of activity as you're entering, coming down Downs, coming into, into the town center. On the parking lot side, just a similar treatment. We just, you know, we're, we're using some, use of some color just to sort of signify some of the public spaces, public spaces of the building. Floors two, three and four are all are all residential spaces, excuse me, residential use within the building. Few of the comments that were made earlier relative to noise and overall construction, you know, we're showing, we're showing solar panels. We're, we're hoping to do a passive house building, you know, high-performing, high-performing envelope, energy-efficient systems. You know, all of that does lend itself, just as Brian was pointing out earlier, between, you know, high-performing windows where it's triple plane, triple pane glazing, very, very tight envelope and exterior walls that are much thicker and much more insulated than a lot of, you know, a lot of construction that we've everything, you know, all of the codes are just sort of lead, leading there. But we're, we're budgeting those right now. Everything is not, not finalized, but that's what we're, that's what with, that's what we're, we're hoping to be able to achieve. And lastly, it's just a small, again, these are conceptual, just a rendering, looking from the town center towards the main entrance and the common areas, which are all on the, the lower right side. And and again, we want to just sort of develop the landscape and the, that's sort of ground treatment that's happening all around the building, develop that a little bit for, to another level before we submit for the next time we're here.
I do want to go back just one real quick. And one of the points I forgot to discuss before I handed it over to Gary is kind of furthering our discussion on the cut-through and how this site is designed. So we've, we've really paid special attention to detail for trying to create an access aisle that doesn't feel like it's something that if you're on Downs Road, you want to get to Market Street, right? So we know that there's going to be a connection kind of planned west and south of the site to Market Street, but we don't want that to be the public roadway for a cut-through. So you know, we've come up with some, some tighter radiuses than we'd probably normally do in a parking lot, but also still while trying to accommodate emergency vehicles. Part of that is also the 22-foot drive aisle when you enter. So it feels small. It doesn't feel as wide as the road you're coming in on. So it feels like it's not meant to be a place for someone to turn left and to, and to go and cut through. In addition to that, I mean, we have material changes along the crosswalk, which are going to just feel like you're in more of a residential setting. And then Gary talked about it briefly, but we're evaluating whether there's a covered drop-off in this location. Really, we want to actually bring that covered drop-off as far into the access aisles we can, whether it's cantilevered. So without any type of columns or anything prohibiting that. But that would kind of really give a better sense of this feels like a residential. This feels like a private setting, not necessarily just something for, you know, the general public to just using cut-through. So another key to this is we haven't developed the full landscaping plan, which Nick Aceto from ALA is going to do. He's going to do a great job on trying to create visual cues so that it feels like from a structural point of view, you're not entering a right-of-way, right? We're entering a private space. So I did want to just touch on that. And then going back to just closing here. So the applicant and the development, the pro, the developments and tenets, site plan in the next couple of months, following concurrently with the subdivision schedule that was just in front of you. The goal is to obtain approval ahead of the July 2023 Maine State Housing Authority application that was mentioned previously. So that's a big deal for funding for the development. And that's, that's our goal for, for moving forward. So I'm going to turn it back to the board and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is an item that is available for public comment, but we typically take a break at 8:30. So before we start the public comment, there will be a five-minute break from whatever time that clock says. From whatever time that clock says. We will now reconvene and reconvene to the notice the town hall is closed tomorrow. This is an item that is available for public comment. I will open it to public comment at this point. Is there anybody in the room who would like to comment? Is there anyone online? Hearing none, public comment is closed. Turn this to the. Over to the board. Let's start down at this end with Jim Hebert.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of questions. With regard to the units, the living units in the house, are they single person or multi-person? And forgive me, could you tell me your name again, sir, please?
Gary Kane.
Gary, thank you, Gary. I apologize.
No, quite all right. We have, I think it was mentioned, we've got 51 apartments. And. Let me just pull out the breakdown. We've got 31 one bedroom apartments. 16 two bedrooms and four three bedroom units. So there will be, there will be multiple, you know, you will have. You will have some multiple occupied units, but the predominantly more than 50% are one bedrooms.
Great. I'm glad to hear about the, the, the tight building envelope, the triple pane windows. Building that into your budget as you, you're picking up on our earlier comments for, on the previous agenda item. Sound will be a real consideration here, especially for. The folks that are going to be living in this, in this building. So if we can maximize the amount of green space. Green sort of sound wall protection against. Just against this facility, softscapes, as much of it to absorb the sound as possible, because, you know, folks may have. An issue or sensitivity to a high amount of sound light, things like that, just depending on what their, what their impairment might be. I'm very happy to see a facility like this here. We just want to make sure that, that it's also sort of protected as well from the other. You know, the, the traffic going through in the space in the outdoor, speaking of that, in the outdoor place making area. Similar to my comments earlier, I'd love to see just to. Either somehow not disguised, but certainly present. Strong crash ballards to protect against pedestrians for many vehicles that may go off the road, slide, slip. Or for whatever reason, just sort of protection, if that's going to be a large gathering space for, for pedestrians and folks outside, we want to make sure that, that those are certainly protected from. Errant vehicles. My, my big concern here. Is the parking. If, if with a, with a 51 unit building with only 41 onsite parking spaces. It's, it's not even one vehicle per room. And I understand that some folks there may not be able to drive a vehicle and will have to have some other arrangements. But I, I don't see. I don't see like a bus stop here or a bus drop off. So I'm thinking from the perspective of someone who's there and they don't have a vehicle. How are they going to go and like carry, you know, go to, go to the grocery store or, or do their, you know, normal day to day. Things that may involve them leaving, leaving their home and going elsewhere, whether it's getting groceries, doing any kind of shopping, traveling somewhere. Is it just going to be Uber and Lyft and taxis coming and going through this space? Or is there going to be like? Like any coordination? And maybe this is more of a town question, but coordination like Greater Portland Metro for a bus route through here. And maybe that's already been discussed before I was a member of the board. And if it has, forgive me, but I would like to see some kind of route or solution for public transportation in here. Because if already, if, if we're, and, and Madam Chair, you mentioned this as well when we're talking about. Drew, you had mentioned a combination of using on-street parking as supplementing. Parking spots for this building as well. It's, it's starting to raise some red flags as far as capacity, just in the entire area, especially if you. Have it this close to the downtown space, excuse me. It's this close to the downtown space and already we're looking at. You know, 10, 15 years from now, those on-street parking spots are going to go away if there's a lot more traffic. We need to make sure that we have adequate parking for. The residents who live here, the workers and the employees that are working here. And that's just a big concern that I have. So again, maybe that's a, leads in again, the previous comments on the other application about. Multi-story parking facility, just to make sure that we have adequate parking for everybody here. Because there is nothing worse than living in a location and going to a spot where you theoretically have it for yourself and then not having it. I lived on the East End in Portland for a while, so I know that feeling very well. So I would like to see what, and maybe this is more in, in your court, Drew, as far as what, what GP is able to do with regard to. You know, how are we going to address this parking issue elsewhere and, and, you know. Taking a look at this multi-story parking facility closer, I guess. What are your thoughts on this?
Yeah. And I, I think, you know, I understand the concern, which is why we wanted to. Point to a, a similar development, because again, the unique nature of this development, not having been in Maine, or I believe New Hampshire before that. We're kind of cutting edge here, if you will, and we're, we're studying other sites to really develop. Well, what do we? What do we think we need? We're not proposing a reduction and telling everyone that they can't have a car here, right? It's just really what we feel like it's actually going to. Demand at this site regarding the public transportation. I know, you know, the overall subdivision has been working on. Bus stops, whether it, I think it's going to be around this intersection and then, and then getting the metro to try to get in here eventually at some point. So that's all in the works. You know, I don't think we have any commitments as of tonight or anything like that, but that's certainly something that. We're reviewing and that, you know, is certainly, we're hoping that this project helps generate the metro to come into the project, right? So we're hoping in kind of the combination of all that. And then again, on the on-street parking, I'm not. We're not going to reserve any of these spaces, obviously in a public street and a public right away like that for this law. It's intended for visitor. It's intended for. That kind of shared parking of all the other different uses around it. So we really start with. 41 units, we feel is adequate for this development and then the surrounding infrastructure being able to support. Visitors or the really high demand peak times in conjunction with all the other sites as well. So.
Gotcha. And I appreciate that, Drew. And again, my only concern is you have. You know, a resident here who can't park their vehicle on one of these, in one of these marked spaces because they are all taken. And now they have to sort of. Search around the downs to go and park somewhere else for it. And especially if they're somehow physically impaired, where, you know, walking a significant distance is a real issue. I, I see that as a, a real big concern for me, just making sure that they have access 100%. Guarantee if they have a vehicle of this building, they should have a dedicated parking spot here, whether. And whether that's a sign that's taken care of through three I or whoever the, the, the landlord or management of this facility is. Maybe that's more on them for the, to decide, but. And maybe other board members can chime on this as well and finish this thought for me, but. And with all due respect, I, I, I do understand the comparison when they, we're making here for, you know, other, other areas like this, but we, we aren't. Not yet anyways, the outskirts of Boston. I mean, that's, you know, we're talking about over, you know, a million people densely populated down in that space with. Multiple choices of, of adequate, I'll say adequate, public transportation where, you know, whether it's trains or buses or just a high density of Uber and Lyft that's in that area. We don't really have that. Where we are in Scarborough for this. So making sure that. You know. The John Smith in this building is able to. Go outside on their stoop and they know that they can go instead of a bus stop and that bus is going to come by every hour or something like that. And they know it can get dropped off there. Or if they know if they can take their car, they can have a spot to go back on. So again, sorry to harp on the parking issue. I'll, I'll get off my box now, but that's. Not a question, but just a consideration that we really want to, what really want to focus on, not just for here, but for everything with regard to the downs as we keep going. And Madam Chair, I'm all set for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I, I, I have some questions on, along the same line. I'm inclined to. Defer to the developers on a project like this because they, I like to think that they know. Their. Their clientele and, and their residents and their needs and everything. Maybe I can preface my question by asking. The, the residents who will be living in this facility. Oh, first of all, I, I just want to say, I think this is a great facility. I think it's a great concept and I'm really pleased that it's going in right here in Scarborough, right at the Downs. Do the, the people who are going to be living here, do they have to qualify to a certain level of disability?
Corey Fellows from POA again. We're going to be working that out with Maine State Housing as well as other funding authorities. There typically are. Tenant selection plans that are required. And you have to abide by applicable fair housing laws, obviously. Based on our discussions with Maine State Housing to this point. We're confident that, that we will be able to develop a, a set of criteria for determining eligibility based on physical disabilities. That hasn't been fleshed out yet. I also just take this opportunity to say that, you know, to Roger's point. You know, we, we have been doing a lot of, a lot of work with focus groups. We've had listening sessions. Paul with his group three I before, long before Poever got involved, had done a lot, a lot of legwork. With different parts of this population and sort of determining what, what the needs and preferences were in terms of living space and parking and so forth. So that, that really was a big part of what informed how, how we developed this plan. And we'll continue to flesh that out. We're also certainly open to continuing to coordinate with, with crossroads on, on. Parking solutions, among other things. And as, as Paul indicated in his intro earlier, it's been a great collaborative process to this point. And also finally, just take the opportunity to say as well that. This property will be professionally managed by POA Communities, which is our affiliated property management company. So POA, POA Communities is, has a lot of experience with, among other things. Enforcing parking regulations and. You know, including in some, in some tricky contexts with a lot of different competing uses and demands. And then we also have a, what we call a community impact program, which is essentially resident services. Where we partner with a lot of local organizations and. I say that partly because that I believe will be part of the transportation, the overall kind of holistic transportation solution here. In addition to public transportation, we realize that we're not quite at the critical mass where. We can do truly transit oriented development here, but that's, you know, that's sort of aspirational. But we're hoping that we will, we'll be part of getting to that point. And then we anticipate that we'll be partnering with local organizations, medical organizations and others. On shuttles and things like that to take people to appointments. And, and other things. So by no means will that solve the, the parking challenge on its own, but it'll be part of that solution. Thanks.
Corey, why are you still there?
Yes.
Well, 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 individuals who are not disabled. Be able to live in these units. Should they, like say. A, a child of, an adult child of a, an adult, you know, a mother or father who's disabled, would they be able to live in a facility such as this?
Yes, that's a good question. And that's, we, we fully anticipate that will be the case. It will not be the situation where everyone in a household has to have a physical disability to be able to live there.
Okay. Can I just jump in? Because it's, it's, this is Paul Lynette. One of the unique features really of, of this from the get-go is to keep families together. And what, what, what can happen is. And it has happened where people become disabled and families have to be, have to be separated and broken up. Because there simply aren't enough accessible housing units. And so we're not going to solve it, that problem with the 51. But we are going to make a statement that rather than an institutional bias, which does exist in our society. We can include people in, in the community and that includes families of, of whatever nature, including the one that you just posited, Roger.
Right. Question for Drew, I guess. The on-street parking, is that going to be dedicated parking spots for this facility? Or could anybody who's. Going to the town center. Use those spaces if they were going to be, if they were going to be available.
The on-street parking on Scarborough Downs Road, so Plan North is not dedicated to the development at all. It's for public use completely. Everything onsite will be dedicated for the residents.
Okay, okay. I, I think this. Kind of lends itself to the overall concern that we have about the general parking in the whole area. And, and. As you and Dan had mentioned, you're going to be taking a closer look at that whole, that whole situation. Because I just. You know, I just wonder about the, the parking spaces available on this site. I mean, what if they, if they had visitors coming, you know, and, and things like that. I mean. That, that's my, that's my, my concern about that. The staff made a comment in, in their, one of their comments was about putting in some sort of a. Condition so people could not bypass. The intersection that we talked about previously and, and make a shortcut through the back of this facility and then down onto Market Street. So. I think that's an important. A important thing to consider. And lastly, my, my last question is. On the first floor. If I recall reading correctly, there was, was there, was there plans to have some commercial activities on the first floor? And if so, was that all the first floor or just a portion closest to the town center?
Hi, Gary Kane from the architectural team. There's no commercial uses in the building, but what we have is on the, you know, on the western side. You know, probably a little less than a third of the footprint of the ground floor is basically our common, our common. Okay. Common and amenity areas, but there are, there are eight. Nine, nine apart, you know, nine other apartments on the ground level beyond that.
Sure. Okay. Good. Thank you. I don't think I have any further questions right now, Rachel, but this, this is. I, I think the architectural drawing, at least the, the preliminary one is very interesting and. It adds a lot of vibrancy to that area. So. Looking forward to further discussions about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Jen.
Okay. I, I also share the concern, actually, I'm kind of struggling with this because I share the concern that this. Will in some way by default become a. I don't want to use bypass. I'll say all. I don't want to use bypass, I'll say alternate route for people between. Downs Road and Market Street for a number of reasons, many of which we have already discussed either on this. Project or the one prior. However, that said, we, you know, we talked about the advantages of that in the prior project, so. I'm just conflicted on that. I can, it's, it's going to be a challenge for the operations of this building, but I think from, for the, from the, the network overall. You know, the less traffic that you can feed through that key intersection. Vehicular traffic, I should say, the better off that will be, so I don't envy, I don't envy there. I am curious about. The choice to cite the. Accessible parking away from the building and am I, am I correct in assuming that that's because. You anticipate more. Pickup and drop off activity closer to the building. And less perhaps turnover parking, I guess, for lack of a better term, among the accessible spaces that would presumably be for. For residents and this, this catches my eye because it's sort of atypical, right? Like a, like a traditional apartment building would have the accessible spaces as close to the, the accessible entrance as possible. And actually, in a number of ways, you, that's the opposite here. There's quite a few of them, but you know, even the, even the short bay of parking, for example, at the end, which is also very close to an entrance. Doesn't have accessible parking at them, and so I'm just curious. That was intentional or if that was done purely based on the number of, of. Accessible spaces that are warranted here or, or sort of what the vision is for the operations of that parking lot.
Yeah, and that's a great point, Jen, so just to clarify, the. The hatched on, I'll call it on drive aisle parking spaces that are parallel to the building are also ADA. So they're not striped like that, but they have the flush curb condition and they have the drop off and loading area next to it. So to a degree, we have almost everything on the plant south side of the building as ADA parking. So it might be a little misleading with just the striping shown. But yes, and then to your point, we also do anticipate, you know, a high activity, a higher activity of turnover closer to the drop off area. Which was, you know, we wanted to provide that area to pull in and leave without backing up. And kind of a more typical drop off fashion, so that, that kind of played into it, but I hope that helped a little bit on the, the sighting.
Sure, yeah, mostly just a question. I mean, it makes sense that you would have a lot of this type of parking here. I'm, I'm really curious, don't need an answer at this meeting, but perhaps a future meeting about. Whether the team from three I consulted on or what. Your thoughts are on the intersection design that was just presented very specifically from. An lowercase a accessibility standpoint, so is this an intersection that. In your opinion, knowing your, the population that you represent and that is likely to live in this facility. Is that a design that is friendly and usable? For them, so that's just something to think about. I think it's, someone used the term universal design, which I just really love. And there's a lot of literature out there about, you know, capital ADA is a federal requirement. All of these projects have to comply with that, but. You know, frankly, it's good for all of us, right? Like everyone gets a little older or you have a stroller or, or you're wheeling a delivery in. And so I, I always think of it from, from that context, but, but very specifically from people. And you, you represent this, that's how I, that's how I see this, you represent this population. In a way that we will not know, and so I'm curious. You know, and you, you can work among your teams in that way, but if you have anything to offer to that design, anything that. That perhaps we have overlooked or the rest of the team has overlooked, I think that would be really. Wonderful input. For making it better for all of us and for your residents. The, just for a question of clarity. Drew, you said, I believe you said that based on the development's. Experience. The, the amount of. Desired parking that's, that's been determined to be needed for this facility is accommodated onsite, is that right?
Correct, yep, that's what, within the 41.
Okay, and so anything, anything utilization of anything offsite or in addition to that would just would be in addition. Not necessarily based on our ordinance, but based on the experience of the, the project. Am I correct in understanding that there will be no direct access, no direct access to the sidewalk facility on Downs Road? From individual units?
Correct, and we actually talked about that quite a bit internally with the team. And again, sketch plan level, we're still working through everything here, but the intention is to have some sort of buffer there, yes.
Okay, and so I, I once lived in a long linear building like this and I have no mobility challenges. And I had a fronting, a unit that fronted out on where I wanted to go and I always had to go like. All the way down and out around another building, um, so I kind of feel this a little bit, but. I, there are some advantages, I'm sure, of doing it this way, that you can sort of more securely control access in and out. But I just think that I was happy to hear the input about. Sort of the, the integration and activation of the, the Downs facade of this building with the sidewalk frontage. I, I like that it's sited close and that you're, you're looking to. Plant and, and otherwise, you know, have that space be activated by residents. I think will. Will be. Just will elevate the use here and also be consistent with a lot of the other. Visions that we've heard about for this, this portion of the project overall. I really appreciated the prior comment about transit and there is quite a lengthy background on that one. For the Downs overall, I think like as, as was stated, I think this is a terrific. You know, inch in that direction, like if, if a project like this doesn't really help encourage transit to come on to the Downs. Then goodness, I am not sure what, you know, what would, and I would hope that with. Continued dense development at this intersection and in the town center overall, that we can continue to sort of inch in that direction. I do have a question actually for staff. So we've decided that or determined that I'm on-street parking isn't dedicated to this building or any other of the buildings here that it's sort of for public use. And I can't remember if on any other projects we have seen this or if this is to come later or not to come at all. Is it regulated in any way, like is there, is it time restricted any of the on-street parking here? Or it's just as long as you want for however long you want?
I haven't seen anything that has a time restricted, it's just open on-street parking.
Okay. Um, this popped into my mind when we were talking about deliveries or other sort of parking needs onsite that are not. Not accessible maybe, so maybe it's a home therapy, someone that's coming to give therapy or a cleaning person. I'm not really sure, you know, someone that's, that's not, that's coming to visit a person here. That doesn't necessarily have a hang tag allowing them to park in any of these spaces. The options for them then would really only be these seven spaces at the end, is that right? Or, or on-street.
Correct, yeah, or on-street, yep.
Okay. And again, I'm going to put my trust in your team and, and assume, or correct me if I'm wrong, that that is sufficient for a building of this size.
Yeah, and again, we're going to provide more justification in our site plan application intent tonight was to introduce it, but yeah, based on our research. And again, we'll keep digging into it, but that is adequate.
The other option that I wondered, and this is my last question. Is whether or not there is the opportunity, so I'm not actually sure, I'm looking at the same plan, I guess. Which I don't think shows, does this show the lot line?
It does, it's.
You see like part of a lot line.
It's, it's over here and then it carries through because of, it's shown as gray because it's part of the subdivision, but. Real quick.
You're really maxed out on this site.
Correct, now the slot line isn't fixed yet, we're still working with crossroads and the development team on exactly where that line, where that sets. But it's somewhere likely in this location.
Okay, so that answers my question, I was going to see if there is any room onsite to bank parking should you need it in the future. And the answer to that obviously would be no. But you know, given the, the location of this building in proximity to the other things that we know are coming online, including this big box that you've labeled to future parking. I think it would be great if there was, you know, an opportunity, the management may be tricky, but. The opportunity to, to. Rely on some shared, some shared parking, so for example, if there's an office use or some sort of compatible. Use nearby where the demand is, is, is an off time for what may be needed here. And that's not specific to this particular site, but in general, as we sort of move into the heart of this. Project, that's all that I have and I, I really appreciate this project and I look forward to seeing the rest of it through design.
Thank you, Jen. Rick?
Yes, thanks for bringing this to Scarborough, I, I think this is something that's certainly. There's a need for it. My understanding, your involvement with main state housing. They do require you to do, you know, a better than code building, you do have to do. Some sort of, and you alluded to the passive house, which I think is a great. You know, you're going from the code requirement of three ACH to point six. So you're, you're going to have a fantastic envelope, you're going to have great windows, probably triple glaze. And so to, to my colleagues' comment about noise, I think, I, I think there's some inherent construction. Methods here that will help keep it quiet in there. I'm reminded of the hotel that went up on Four Street. East Brown Cow, I believe, built that. And a year later, they had to go and redo the entire outside because they got tired of issuing. Earplugs for those that faced Four Street because of the noise coming from the bars and stuff like that. So it is an issue and as we move into a downtown district, it will certainly be of, of. This board's concern that we minimize the noise within, inside the buildings. I'm assuming because you're saying this is independent living, there is no, there is no state licensing requirements or anything like that, you're not going for any license.
Yes.
So then. To, to Jen's point. I see where there's probably going to be. Services brought to folks living there. You can't escape that. My experience, you know, 10 years in a long-term care facility, I recognize that. There's a lot, you, on a holiday, you have everybody picking up mom and dad to go and take them to, to their house for Christmas dinner. You're going to get traffic. I am worried about the traffic. I'm, and, and so I'm just going to ask this question, why did you choose a four-story building instead of a six-story building when you. You're allowed to build something. Six feet, six stories in this area and not four stories. Building up can be a little cheaper. It has challenges. Especially if you're talking about an elevator, whether you're going to do a, a bore or you're doing a cable and things of those nature. But. I'm just throwing it out there that there could be a way in which we could get more. On-site parking by adjusting the footprint of the building, maybe going up. Maybe the middle goes up and you could shrink in the sides a little bit and allow for more. Internal lot space that would allow for some additional parking. I, I'm just concerned and, you know, 22 aisle drive width, I know there's some pros and cons, less impervious. But now you have tighter distance between cars coming and going. And I'm not sure how I feel about, you know, the waiver request of reducing. Drive aisle when we're not even getting the, you know, in my opinion. Enough. Ancillary, I'll call it ancillary parking, because I think that's going to be the drawback here is, is. The services being brought to these folks shouldn't be minimized, it's going to be traffic. And, and so I have some concerns with that and I just would like to see if maybe you could address it with a, with the footprint of the building itself. And maybe resolving some of those issues. I applaud and I, I'm assuming because I'm reading into some of the, the pictures here, but. I'm thinking you're going VR, variable refrigerant flow system, all heat pumps. Tying in with an electrical system that you probably don't have enough roof space. Certainly if you go up, you're going to maybe shrink the building, you'd lose a little bit of, of roof coverage for the PV. So you're not going to be a total net zero building. And, and I don't think that's your intent, is it, to go net zero? You're, you're just doing some onsite generation to be responsible stewards.
That is correct, at the moment, we're not net zero and, and even at the moment right now, we're, we're hoping for passive, we're hoping for solar PV. It's all in budgeting at this, at this point, but.
Yeah.
That's where we're, that's where.
Well, again, you got, you got main state housing, you had to follow their rules too, and, and they've got some.
Quite strange.
Construction requirements if you're going to, to utilize some of their, their assets. On that same note with the VR, with I'm guessing VRFs and you've got a couple of. Penthouses up there, I don't know if that's for the, the elevator machinery or what have you, but. I'd kind of like to see the detail of the. The edges of the roof and is there an opportunity to build those up a little bit higher just to do a little bit of screening? Not that I want to, me personally, I love to see solar and I love to see VRFs, but I'm a geek. And not everybody likes to see those big steel boxes, knowing that they're got a COP of, of 3.2 when it's minus five degrees out. Real good energy savers. So I would, I, I'd like to see if maybe your design team could take a look at the facade. And see if maybe there's a way to do a little extra shielding as, as it's downtown and you're going to have other buildings. And some people just don't like to look at mechanical equipment on roofs all the time. But I think, you know, generally speaking, I, I think my other colleagues have. Certainly addressed a lot of things here, so my big takeaways or my big ask for you is, is, is maybe looking at. The footprint of the building and see if there might be. A way in which we could get the parking situation a little bit better than what it is. And also check the newly. Approved EV ordinance that the town of Scarborough has. We're pretty aggressive about that in this town. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, I'm going to try and wrap this up because my colleagues have done a wonderful job. They've been talking, I've been going through my notes and crossing off things. But I do want to indicate and let you folks know that I'm, I'm with my colleagues that this is a wonderful project for the town. And I look forward to it. Coming back to us in, in more detail. Couple of things, one, I'm going to use a term that Corey Fellows must be terribly familiar with, and that's talking about robust landscaping. So as you are looking at the landscaping, I'm going to be looking at how robust it is. That includes how you're going to handle the outer doors. The, the doors to the, the outside from the apartments, those little. Those little patio areas. There are other buildings in the Downs that have that sort of an arrangement and I'm not saying copy them. But you might want to take a look at how other people have, other developers have handled that. And I'm thinking of the Uplands and a couple of the apartments or the condos, I guess, along. Along Downs Road. That's an opportunity for landscaping that's. Um that's an opportunity for landscaping that's both um pleasing to the people in the apartments and a wonderful visual for the street. Uh I echo what the staff have talked about, the back uh the bike racks out there. I don't know if you're planning on having bike racks inside, uh a bike room inside, that's something to to consider. Uh that's happening in one of the other developments in town. Um that place also has indoor trash receptacles. I don't know how, I don't know if you're expecting people to take their trash outside uh or if there's some going to be some sort of an indoor uh facility where they can take at least their at least their recycle, certainly. That's something to take a look at. I my druthers is that you you really do not count the on-street parking at all as you're making any calculations. So according to our uh ordinances, that require your building requires eighty-seven um off-site parking spaces or off off-street off-street parking spaces. I and you've got, I think, forty-four that I counted, there may be more. Uh I'm just not convinced that that is adequate. So um as all of my colleagues have mentioned a problem with that, uh I'm gonna add my voice to that. Uh because you also have, as you're looking at it from the staff memo, lots with forty or more spaces require fifteen percent of the parking lot be landscaped. So the full site plan that comes before us has got to have that sort of uh that sort of a landscape or come to us for a waiver. You need to, you you are gonna need to do that. I suspect lots with fifteen or more spaces should be broken up with trees, landscaped islands, grade changes, low walls, and other features. They still need to be accessible. So that sort of a design needs to be extremely careful. Uh as I look at the access and the what I will no longer call a cut-through, because I will try not to cut through there. It it seems to me that one possibility, um if you're really looking at a twenty-two-foot of drive aisle, is to make that all one-way. Uh as it exists now, um it's very, very narrow. And you might want to really, as I said, strongly consider looking upon that as a as as a one-way drive aisle. That uh also means that folks will be less inclined to cut through if they can only go one way. You have the parking spaces, um parallel parking along the building. Folks who come in the wrong one, the wrong way onto that drive aisle are going to have to turn around to park in those parallel spaces. Uh a making that whole a one-way actually takes care of that. So I I think you need really to to think so carefully about how this parking is gonna work. Uh knowing that we don't want to give residents a hunting license for to get a spot. That they should have enough space in their own facility and their own next to their own homes that they they don't have to go out on the street, they don't have to wander through uh across the street into other parking areas. Um but all of this really, all of the parking really needs to be related to the building and interconnected. So I I look forward to how you're going to think about that. Uh there are a few other mentions here um in the staff memo that I'm sure you'll take a look at, the continuous internal walkways, uh space-making or place place-making, uh and I look forward very much to your coming back to us. And I think we will, I think we will be able to uh get this done for you, uh especially if you work carefully with the staff uh and follow through with their advice. I think the timeline that you have uh presented to us, I think that's that's doable, uh especially with your careful work with with the staff. So thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
We now have uh the O P G uh Construction Company, uh with a proposed hotel. And that is item four point oh two, O P G Construction Corporation requests a sketch plan review of a hundred and thirteen-room hotel located at two oh five Southborough Drive. The property is further identified as assessors map R thirty-seven lot forty-eight E. I am going to combine this discussion with item number five oh two. O P G Construction Corporation requests a site pla- a plan review for a temporary gravel stockpile at two hundred Southborough Drive. The property is further identified as assessors map R thirty-seven lot forty-eight E. So we will start with the discussion of the sketch plan. Uh once we are satisfied with the discussion with sketch plan, we will simply move into the discussion of the gravel uh stockpile. Eric?
Uh just to uh give a brief uh update, I know the hour is sort of getting a little late. Um the at the February twenty-first Planning Board meeting, the board requested that the applicant provide a sketch plan for the proposed development um that was considered uh as a site plan for a preload in that area, uh at two oh five Southborough Drive. The applicant has provided that uh showing the overall layout, parking and grading, uh the site plan for the stockpile. Um uh we're viewing jointly here, as Rachel just mentioned. Um staff's primary comments revolved around confirming that the building height would meet the sixty-foot uh ma- maximum height for the B two zoning district. But we've also included full site plan review comments for uh ease of full site plan submission uh by the applicant. On the site plan side of things, uh the staff has provided a draft motion for the board's consideration if it's comfortable with the sketch plan at this point, and similarly comfortable with the uh preload stockpile application. And with that, I would turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Uh and for the developer?
Uh thank you. Uh before we get going, am I able to share my screen? Autumn, thank you.
And and by the way, for those of you who are new to the Planning Board, Eric did make a comment that it's getting late. Um we have gone uh to eleven-thirty and twelve o'clock. Um I suspect that we will not break those records today.
We'll do everything we can to not. All right, that's working now? All right. Uh thank you, Madam Chairman, and thank you, Planning Board. Uh my name's David Sherborne. I'm an architect and vice president at O P G Construction. Uh we're a design-build contractor located in the Lakes Region of New Hampshire. Uh we have designed and built over fifty hotels throughout New England um over the last couple of decades. Um I'm here with Maureen McGloane, uh civil engineer from Ranson Consulting. Um we're representing forty-nine, uh four ninety-one Payne LLC, who's the landowner and developer for this particular project. Uh I'll I'll keep it short. This is obviously the site plan. Um we'll sort of run through sort of the basic programming of the hotel itself, uh what we're looking to provide, and then I know that there were some staff comments, a memo that was sent out on Friday, and we've sort of got some verbal responses to respond to those, and we'll open it up to some questioning as well. Uh in terms of the basic uh site layout and programming of the building, uh you can see here on the site plan, uh it's proposed as a four-story hotel, hundred and thirteen rooms uh located on the southern edge of the property with the main uh entrance for guests at the uh northwest corner of the building itself. Um the parking lot uh connects into part of the existing parking lot of the Homewood Suites to the east of this particular property uh project. Um there is Sebago Brewery to the north, and also to the north of the site is uh Pizza Plus. Uh that extension of the existing parking lot uh runs south and then turns west where we've got um a cul-de-sac uh at the entry point to the hotel hotel, uh and we're also proposing a utilizing the existing curb cut along Payne Road, um and the purposes of that would really be for the utilization of emergency vehicles only. It's not intended for um guests of the hotel uh entering and exiting the site. It's really just uh use of emergency uh vehicles. So um as I just briefly stated, um it's an extended stay hotel. It's an unbranded hotel, so it's not affiliated with a Hilton or a Marriott. Uh it's independent, uh four stories tall. I can confirm, one of the staff comments was relating to maximum height of the building. We are at forty-four feet, which is below the sixty feet uh permitted within this zoning district. Um it's a twelve thousand square foot building footprint, uh overall at forty-eight thousand square feet. I will show you shortly in the floor plans, but guest amenities are somewhat limited compared to a lot of sort of branded hotels. There's a small sitting lounge, an outdoor patio, and a small fitness room. Beyond that, there is no food service for guests. There's no breakfasts or any other bar or any other amenities uh beyond that. Um there was a little bit of confusion. I can clarify that a little bit. We are proposing a hundred and thirty-seven new parking spaces to be built as part of this hotel project. Um a hundred and fourteen are assigned to the hotel itself, uh with twenty-three that will be leased to Sebago Brewery um at completion of the project. Uh going over, there was some um some comments in terms of bulk and massing. We can just confirm that. Uh obviously, the first few here are just frontages which we're all complying with. I will point out uh maximum building coverage uh fifty percent uh maximum. We're currently proposing twelve percent maximum lot coverage, eighty-five percent maximum permissible. We're currently proposing fifty-five percent building height again. We're under the sixty-foot max, uh and we meet the buffers and obviously providing the um hundred and fourteen parking spaces, which is slightly more than one per room. In terms of where we are with the uh project status, we started back in October, uh having a consultation with staff. Um Barry Stowe from our office and Mark Wogel, one of the um co-owners of the property, uh met with staff and based on that consultation, we then reached out to the fire department, uh in particular looking at utilizing the curb cut off Payne Road. Um there was some feedback and some tweaks that were made to the site plan, which is where we are today, and um the initial feedback from the fire department was pending town approval and planning board that they were uh okay with the the approach that we were taking there. Obviously, we were here last month, and this is part of that continuing in process that we're happy to work with the board and the staff to to get this through to site plan uh approval and uh in our anxiousness to expedite the process as much as possible, we did file for a full site plan uh application earlier today or this afternoon. We understand that there's at risk and there's gonna be feedback here that we may have to make some adjustments to that, so we're happy to answer any questions that come up from that. Uh beyond through the town, we know we've got um some main D U P um modifications for the preload in the hotel that we have to make. Uh we've reached out for a pre-application um as part of that amendment to the site location. Um and then there's obviously stormwater law as well. I think, as you can probably tell, between last month and this month, we're trying to expedite the process as much as we can. The developed the um property owner is excited for this project and looking to start construction as soon as possible uh this year. Uh so here's the site plan. We talked briefly about it. I can move on to the floor plan. So this is our first floor plan right here. Um the there's eight uh structural bays on the left-hand side, which is the uh westernmost portion of the building facing um Payne Road with the entrance of the cul-de-sac. Uh and through here, we've got a small reception area. Uh adjacent to that is a small seating lounge. Opposite that, we've got a small fitness room and an elevator and stairs up to the upper floors of this western end of the building, small guest laundry and a small vending area. The remainder of the rooms, um approximately three hundred and fifty square feet. Uh this being an extended stay is a with it being extended stay really means that there's a in-room uh small kitchenette, so there's facilities for people to be able to cook and provide food rather than it just be um bedroom and and bathroom. Moving up to the upper floor, we really see a continuation of the guest rooms in the same uh manner as the first floor, but obviously on the le- left-hand side uh what was sort of administration and public amenity space now becomes guest rooms, and that's applicable for floors two, three, and four. Uh the next page is what we have envisioned currently for the exterior treatment of the building. Um we've we've included in these full site plan application earlier today a narrative. Um but uh the direction we are currently going is would be sort of um synthetic stucco for the majority of this and try to utilize that um to articulate and provide some relief within the building through color um and facade treatment. We have recesses at each of the stairwell exits on the northern and southern side of the building and also uh have a projecting mass with a higher roof line and a large roof overhangs and slightly different coloration um at the northeast corner here um to help draw attention and make it easily navigatable for people entering the site and guests to find their way to the main entrance of the building. Uh another view, similar just rotated slightly, so this will be looking from Payne Road itself. Um similar treatment again, just utilizing the materials and the windows and the composition to to break up the the mass of a a building, uh the hotel and uh we got some site plan. This was part of the original site plan application. I think I'll I'll address some of the some the staff comments, and then if there's any specific questions, I think Maureen can answer relating to stormwater treatment, I think was part of the original preload application as well. So as I mentioned, we had staff comments come in on Friday. Um I'll just sort of run through where we stand with some of those and how they may or may not have been addressed with the site plan application or what our um approach to those would be. Um item one was talking about space involved. I think we've uh covered with those. We addressed those in the full site plan, and everything's compliant from our perspective there. Um plan development standards, there was a comment about, you know, providing amenities such as benches and bike racks to to sort of help strengthen the walkable pedestrian amenities. Uh we're more than happy to do that. Ownership's okay to do that. I'm not sure if it's on the current site plan application, but we're happy to add those. Um and we um should have no issue getting approval from the condominium um of two hundred South or um ownership team uh for the proposed site plan as it stands today. Uh one comment came up regarding Payne Road access. Um staff is recommending to eliminate both curb cuts that exist today south of um Pizza Plus. We are eliminating the southernmost curb cut. Um I just want to remind that the northernmost curb cut, we're looking to utilize it as it is in terms of uh location and width, and just remind you that uh we hope the board would look favorably on utilizing that, knowing that it's only to be used as um as emergency access vehicle and not for users of the hotel itself. Um part of that access as well, I was talking about screening of any parking um around that cul-de-sac. We're happy to provide that, and we've got a landscaping plan as part of that full site plan application. Another comment was relating to service areas, and if there's any dedicated service areas to be proposed, and if there are uh there is any screening that's associated with that. We're not proposing any dedicated service areas. This is um there's limited sort of public amenity. There's not food service, so we're not expecting a lot of service deliveries. It would really be in the same, the extent of cleaning and small vending supplies. Um we have full truck access to the easternmost portion of the site uh with turning radius that also fire apparatus and larger trucks would have access to. Uh parking, uh we are able to clarify the hundred and fourteen spaces. Uh I can confirm that E V spaces will be installed. The required percentage of installed, ready, and capable will be required as proposed as needed, and we've got that in the site plan application. Uh there is dead-end parking through the cul-de-sac that was identified. We can confirm that there is adequate space for vehicles to turn around um and that it will be screened from Payne Ro- Road um to meet the town standards. Um we are providing fifteen percent minimum landscaping. That will be clarified on the site plan application that we're in today. Uh and then in terms of outdoor seating, we currently show an outdoor seating area on the southern portion of the site um are adjacent to the southern side of the fitness room and um where there's stairs coming off the elevator lobby in the stairwells to the south of that um the building. Uh we will, we have provided lighting, landscape, and stormwater plans. There was a clarification that there was six settlement plates for the preload identified in the geotechnical report. We're happy to amend that and I think we had shown five, but we can add six there. That's not a problem. We're currently going through the process of getting any necessary Southborough and sanitary district approvals. And we will provide, happy to provide erosion and sedimentation control as requested by the staff. And we, as mentioned earlier, we've begun the process of the amendment to the main D U P site location permit. So that's kind of a quick run through. Hopefully, you followed it all. I'm here. Maureen's here available as well, and we can pull up some plans to address any comments or concerns.
Thank you. This is an item that is subject to public comment. Is there anyone in the room who would like to comment? Seeing none from the room, do we have anyone online? We do not. Public comment is closed. I'm going to throw this open to to the board without calling on anybody by name. Who would like to go? Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and seeing this with the previous, the loading application item as well makes it much more clear. So thank you for being very clear on that. The only the only comment that I have in one is for you is that for the L E D lighting, whether it's building mounted or if it's pole mounted on the site, that just confirm and make sure that they're specified at a three thousand, three thousand Kelvin color temperature.
Yeah, that's typically what we'll do on building and tight lighting. So we'll confirm that that's the way it was.
Yeah, a lot of times it can be thirty-five hundred or four thousand, but really three thousand is what we want here. It's more of the warm white.
A great deal.
Closer to the traditional lighting source. Thank you. That's the only question I have for you. The other question I have is presuming no further questions or issues from the board, Madam Chair. Are we moving forward with this? Were we voting on this draft motion afterwards?
This is, this is a sketch plan, so there is no vote.
Right. This is related to the preloading portion.
Go ahead.
The the item three, the applicant will have six months to submit a site plan until May first, two thousand twenty-four to receive building permits before the applicant will be required to return the site to pre-existing conditions. Is this our way of giving them a timeline for when they're allowed to keep that on there so that the preloading is not on for an overly long period of time?
I believe that's correct.
And I'm very satisfied with everything presented tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just piggyback on on the three thousand K. It's it's also the dark sky. That's the big thing. You can't get dark sky fixtures if they're greater than three thousand K. So you're on board with the three thousand. That's excellent. It will require you to have the dimming capabilities so that during you can schedule it to lower output during less traffic times. In other words, like midnight, you can turn it down a little bit and save the planet oodles, right?
Not a problem.
I too am satisfied at this level. You you kind of had an advantage because we kind of talked you through the sketch planning last time you were here because we were going through the the preloading. I'm satisfied the direction you're going with this on the sketch plan. I think having the staff comments here and your responses to to most of them seem like you're all on the same page. I'm comfortable with that and therefore the conditions on the stockpiling phase, I'm I'm comfortable with. What was Roger yelling at me?
Well, I Roger has had his hand up, so I'm waiting to to call on him when you're done.
Oh, okay. Well, I am done.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Rick Meinke is done. Roger. Roger, I think you've been unmuted. Okay, Roger, Autumn's having trouble unmuting you. So I'm gonna go to, okay, you're up.
I'm actually, actually, I have no problem with anything that's been done, been said so far. I wasn't at the last meeting, so I think my colleagues have covered everything well. So I really don't don't have much to add, I don't think. So I appreciate your patience. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Anybody else comment?
I just have two questions. One, without going into too many of the details, it looks like in general, the idea, the approach to stormwater here is to use some, actually some pretty creative green infrastructure treatments, but to generally not tie into or drain to existing stormwater systems with the exception of the lower, lower right. Do I have that right? Lower right drainage area.
Yes and no. Let me try and see if I can do this on Dave's computer. I have, yeah, let's go with a. Yeah, that one. And and I apologize for, you know, how quickly this was kind of thrown up there, but it was, we were in the midst of trying to finalize calculations. This this particular site was brought before the board with the Sebago. But it was brought before D E P with the Sebago piece as well as a restaurant in the in the same area that we're currently working in. So when that design was done in two thousand and eight, it considered this development. But what it didn't consider is that this development would be proposed fifteen years later. And some of those stormwater treatment systems are not actually available anymore. So that BioCell two that is just south of the Homewood Suites, that BioCell was oversized and was intended to take a certain volume of water from this particular site. Through our site plan changes here from the original proposal, we're going to be stealing a portion of Bio Retention Cell two. And therefore, we have reduced the amount of area that can be treated by BioCell two. So we are reducing the amount of impervious surface that is going to BioCell two. In doing so, we then had to find other treatment mechanisms for that parking lot. So we're using a focal point treatment. Also, it's a it's a type of BioCell. It's just more, it's like on steroids. It you can, the soil filter media can, the water can go through it at about a hundred inches per hour versus about two point five. So it's a pretty heavy-duty treatment system with a very small footprint. The discharge from that treatment system will still go through the piping and out to the level spreaders, as was previously intended for this entire area. We're using also some focal point systems as well as another BioCell and grass underdrain swales around the building and around the parking lot, treating the water there and then interconnecting it with the stormwater that goes out to those level spreaders instead of using a storm treat system, which I don't even think you can get on eBay. But it is not one that would be even available for us to be able to put that in. So the fortunate thing is that some of the infrastructure is already in place. All of the piping is already in place. And for the most part, on some of the drain manholes as well as the sewer manhole, we have pipes that were stubs that were installed and capped during the the construction of the Sebago Brewing. So we're planning on using that that existing infrastructure to be able to bring everything from stormwater down to the level spreaders. And then from sewer, there's a sewer manhole that that currently connects out onto Southborough Drive. So that takes care of some of that that infrastructure question.
Okay, great. And then, did I hear correctly that you included turning template diagrams with your site plan? Is that what you were saying earlier today that went in today?
We didn't include any turning template diagrams.
Okay.
I know that they were done, but we didn't include any with the site plan.
Maybe maybe even as just part of a presentation next time it would be helpful. I'm just curious to see how that works with that.
Yep, that makes an awful lot of sense.
Circle there. That's all I have.
Yeah, I think I think one of the things to consider with this particular hotel, because it's pretty low-key, I guess. And I, we had the same questions about the the trucks, what kind of trucks are you going to be bringing in through here? What kind of deliveries are going to be made? My understanding is that they're they're going to be your standard box trucks with U P S deliveries, FedEx deliveries. You know, nothing, nothing big. So that that made me feel a little bit better about how we would be able to manage getting that traffic in through there. That that cul-de-sac is actually thirty-one and a half from the edge of the parking spaces to the center. I keep calling it the Spartan and that that is like an ear. Yeah. So it's thirty-one and a half feet from the end of the parking spaces to that center island. So that there's a, there's a pretty decent aisle in there.
All right, thank you. I'm going to actually probably move faster into the gravel wetland, but I, the gravel stockpile, excuse me. But I do have a couple of suggestions for you. And one is in terms of the landscaping on the parking lot in between the Spartan and Payne Road. A lot of times what folks have done is put in a berm with grasses on top of it and low bushes and trees. That's something that you can consider or you can do a typical landscape. But in any case, you need to make as much effort as possible to hide the parking area. That's, as I said, that's one way of taking a look at it. The other thing to talk to you about is how you get into or how people know how to get into the hotel area from Southborough Drive. And what you are really going to have to do is provide some wayfaring signs in the parking lots. So you're going to have to talk to the Homewood Suites and Sebago again to make sure that you can put up some signs in there that say X Hotel this way.
Great, yeah. And we've we've talked with the ownership group, there's an existing pile monument sign out on Payne Road that has space for one additional sign in there so we can start out on Payne Road. And obviously, there are minimal to us working with them for wayfinding signs off Southborough Drive as well.
Yeah, because what, once they're in there, the the traffic lane right next to Sebago Brewery, I have found from visiting there, is kind of narrow and cars going both ways provide a problem. So direct, direct folks into your parking lot very carefully. One way past the Sebago and the other way past the Homewood. In other words, into entrance on one drive aisle and exit on the other drive aisle. Because you're going, essentially sending them through parking lots. So just make sure that you're really clear for them, for your guests, how they're going to get there. I agree with the staff on the other comments that they may have on there. I think you've responded to the questions that they had in general. Moving into item number five point oh two, Apache Construction Corporation request site plan, excuse me, that's not it, four, four point oh two. I was right, five point oh two, Apache Construction Corporation request site plan review for a temporary gravel stockpile at two hundred Southboard Drive. The property is further identified as assesses map R thirty-seven lot forty A E. Notice how I slid from the sketch plan, which we seem to have finished our discussion of and into a discussion of the the gravel stockpile. The geotechnic report indicated, and I think this is something that's important for you in terms of what you're looking at in terms of starting construction, that without WIC drains is an eight-month settlement. With WIC drains, there's a three to four month settlement. And if you folks want to get into construction in June, you're going to need to put the WIC drains into the into the gravel.
Yes, we've started looking at that as well.
Yeah, that that could meet your desires in terms of how you how you manage your construction. I like the design of the building. I look forward to seeing a little more of it. I was intrigued by the windows that you showed in the front. They were a little different. I think from what I saw, they were the the mullions were not of, were asymmetrical.
Correct.
And I thought that really provided an interest in that building that kind of broke up again more of the more of the facade. But you don't have that asymmetrical in the end, I don't believe, the facing Payne Road.
No, there's narrow windows there, so it didn't really provide the opportunity to do that. But we are taking a light, a slight look at that right now. We're looking at the room configuration, so there may be an opportunity to do something more like that on the Payne Road and 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 add some more interest similar to what we're doing on the other sides.
We really appreciate and and actually, the the codes called for, the owners' call for an interest to a building at the street, at the visual. And folks are going to be going through there and really taking a look at at the building. So that end unit, the end facing Payne Road, really look hard at that and maybe a little beef up on on what it's going to look like.
Not a problem. We'll definitely do that.
Okay, I I don't have any more comments. Do we have anything else? In that case, I have, just in case you weren't aware, we we did agree with your sketch plan with all of the rest of the comments. We don't vote on, we don't vote on sketch plans.
That was positive, so we'll take that and run with it.
You're in good shape. I have a draft motion, Apache Construction Corporation site plan review. I move to approve the project titled Temporary Gravel Stockpile proposed by Apache Construction Corporation as depicted on the plan set prepared by Ransom Consulting dated two twenty-seven twenty-three with the following findings and conditions, findings. The proposal includes placement of a temporary gravel stockpile at two oh five Southborough Drive. The stockpile is in anticipation of a future project that will require further site plan review by the planning board. Conditions, one, prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include include appropriate town staff, the developer and their site contractor and is to be coordinated through the planning department. All plan modifications are to be completed prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. Two, prior to the pre-construction meeting, the applicant shall, A, provide a performance guarantee. The guarantee must include, but is not limited to, the expenses for the removal of the preload material, removal of all existing stockpiled materials, restoration of the site to existing conditions, stabilization of the site and any necessary erosion control measures. B, based on the geotechnical report, to reduce preload time, revise materials and plan sets to include WIC drains. C, address comments in the staff memo dated three thirteen twenty-three. Three, a site plan review by the planning board will be required for any proposed construction and use related to the stockpile and preload area. The applicant will have six months to submit a site plan and until May first, two thousand twenty-four to receive building permits before the applicant will be required to return the site to pre-existing conditions or upgraded to meet town standards. Failure to comply with this timeline would result in a violation of this approval. Is there a second?
I second it, Madam Chair.
Seconded by Rick Meinke. Seeing no hands waving. Doreen, we call the roll, please.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
Rick Meinke?
Yes.
Jennifer Lag? Yes. Jim Hebert?
Yes.
And Roger Beal.
Yes.
Congratulations. That has been approved. Your sketch plan is going through and we look forward to seeing you. And I have been very ambitious timeframe. Hope you can do it.
All right, thank you very much for working with us and we look forward to seeing you soon. Stay safe tomorrow with the snow.
Yes, as I said, the the town, the town. Yes, as I said, the, the town, the town, the town hall is closed tomorrow. So yeah, well, it's raining when I got here. And what it means for me is my 8:00 AM meeting is canceled in the town, in the town hall is canceled. Item 6.01, minor development reviews. Eric?
Similarly to the last planning board meeting, I think I updated the board that IDEX was going to be submitting for a minor development review of realignment of the rear drive aisle to accommodate a, a small 12 by 12 nitrogen tank and pad. They are also proposing to reconfigure and eliminate a couple of the planter boxes to accommodate some, some outdoor seating as well as show the configuration of the private drive shared with NextGen lot 35. That is currently being reviewed. Staff really has no comments on it. We are just awaiting the fire department's approval of the tank size as we understand that tanks of a certain size could require state fire marshal approval.
Thank you. 602 Administrative Amendment Report.
On the administrative side of things, I think we updated the board last time, but we have now received the formal application. Hannaford, as it goes to fit up the former Shaw's building at 417 Payne Road, is proposing an addition of a clink building in the parking lot towards the rear. We are currently reviewing that at the moment.
Thank you. Correspondence?
Not at this time.
Planning Board comments?
I have one question.
Sure.
In the Portland Press Herald, last week or two weeks ago, there was the landfill stopped accepting sludge article. How does that directly, does that affect us at all? I guess is a question for you, Autumn. Like, what are the implications of that for us if there are any?
There are implications of that. We have, our projects have to get approval from the sanitary district if they're going to be utilizing their services. So we are in direct contact with their director of operations and so we're awaiting some legislative decisions. We'll keep you posted.
Okay, thanks.
Technically, as a planning board, we can continue to hear things, but we can't approve things. So that if it come, if it does come down to that, rather than create a queue going back, you know, to two years from now, we could hear sketch plans. We could take a look at site review plans. We could not move them forward if there is no access to sewer. But what that would mean is we, we kind of can start some stuff so that when the sewer problem is settled, excuse, excuse the expression there, that people can come back at least partway done with their, their applications. But said, we can't, we can't prove anything.
Gotcha. Understood.
And Steph is also working, trying to be a little more communicative to the sanitary district. They have asked for our list of projects that we have for ongoing reviews. And then we sent them a brief bulleted list of projects that we've had discussions on with folks who we anticipate will submit, just as if they can kind of get a handle on what might be coming forward. So.
And this would be for projects, only for projects that are going to be tied to public sewer?
Yes, yes. So if, if it were a single family home out, out in West Scarborough.
Like a leach field. Yeah.
Yep.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other board questions, comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the planning department for registering a few of us for that MMA class. Looking forward to attending that. Thank you.
They may not let us all sit together because we may, you know, cause, cause trouble, but we'll be there.
I still have my spit gun.
Any other comments? Thank you all. I, I do want to honor Rick Perry. He and I came on the planning board at the same time. What has been going on is CMP is pulling him out for just about everything. So he has not been able to come the way, to the meetings, the way he's wanted to. He, his letter of resignation indicated that he was hoping he would be able, when his work settles down, that he would be able to serve on, on this committee again or on another committee and provide community service to the town. So, thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Two.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.